Gentlemen, welcome to the Town of Sitewood Selectmen Meeting for Tuesday, June 5th. At this time, I'd ask for a second of the agenda.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Canfield. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, good evening, folks. At this point, are there any walk-ins this evening?
No.
And that's good, so that's moving right along. I see the next is the reporter of the town administrator, but I think Jim has told me-
I actually have a very quick one. I had Nancy put something together for me, just to give the board an idea of what your department has been doing the last several months. I just wanted to give you a list of the grants that the towns received since January. Fifty-eight thousand dollars in a technology grant from the Community Compact for water and sewer G.I.S. system. Thirty thousand for mass housing for housing production plan. Three-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-sixteen for the elevation of two properties on Oceanside and one on Jericho. Fifty-eight thousand towards our administrative costs, that's for the coastal resource officer. Eleven thousand for fisheries and wildlife towards our pump-out costs. Seventy-five thousand for vulnerability grant for detailed feasibility assessment of the town's wastewater infrastructure to identify and assess alternative strategies for resiliency. Sitewood Coastal Community Assessment, supported by ten thousand EPA funding and ten thousand from the Lincoln Land Trust. That's going to kind of do a survey of people around town as to what they think we need, what we need in order to get people on the water, people off the water. Two-hundred-and-twenty-seven, three-oh-nine for seawall and dam repair for the upgrades of the reservoir dam. Two-hundred thousand dollars in efficiency and regionalization grant for the regional source study. Sixty-five hundred for the transfer station, sustainable materials recovery program grant. Hundred-and-ninety-five thousand from the Army Corps of Engineers for this year of the Cedar Point Hurricane and Coastal Storm Damage Reduction feasibility study. That's a lot of money. And sixty-nine, twenty-three for the Department of Fire Services for our annual safe grant. So altogether, well over half a million dollars worth of grants just in the last six months, so.
That's something that, you know, we've talked about trying to at least publicize, at least online, because I know when I first started eleven years ago, Sean, you know too, and Tony, we weren't getting an awful lot of grants, and that was one of the big issues that a lot of people were saying, like, can we get more grants? And we've been so successful, I mean, just in less than six months. That's just phenomenal. You know, it speaks volumes to the town employees and what they're doing for the benefit of the town. And I just have to say, you know, I'm just flabbergasted. Otherwise, either we don't do what we're proposing to do with these grants, or we take it out of the budget. So, phenomenal.
And with our new Economic Development Director, Brad Washburn, we're looking at a whole new category of P-W-E-N, Economic Development Grants, that the town really has never even been in on. So we're hoping to see some results from some of the stuff we're looking at through those grants. I hear some contacts and some knowledge, and so they do a good job, and I thought the board should recognize and be aware of some of the stuff they're doing, just so. When I don't have an update, we're actually doing stuff just because I don't have anything to say.
Yeah, that's great.
Who funded the sewer study? Which alphabet came from?
It was part of the Community Compact. So that was the efficiency and regionalization portion of the Community Compact. So we spent a hundred thousand already, we're spending the second two-hundred thousand now. We have a meeting in two weeks, the nineteenth. We'll get the latest results and see where we are, and we're pretty sure that that will send us further down the road than each town has got their own money, which we've already profited a hundred thousand dollars. But I think all indications are that that is a viable project that we're going to want to pursue.
Excellent.
Great. Same question, just to know where that came from. I answered it before.
Yeah, Jim, just a quick update, and I know we've been talking about this, but just so it's on television, the field up at Cushing. I keep getting questions on that. I just want to, I'll give an update, and you can tell me where I'm mistaken. So the plan is to get a big tank up there, put it underground, drip-feed it during the evening when water isn't used, and then water the field from that. And principal up there didn't want to have all that construction during school year, so right after the school year is when we're going to start trying to fund that and get that in place.
Right, that's the plan.
Okay. So probably realistically, they need some seeding too, so fall?
Yeah, I mean, we're hoping to have the whole thing ready July, August, so it'll be ready for the fall. But if we're going to seed and take care of it, we're going to try to get the kids off, that's going to be the issue, because that's their playground. But the reason we're going with that system, though, is if you try to irrigate right off the water system up there, there's not sufficient water pressure, and you basically drain every house up there trying to wash those fields. So we're going to build a storage stack, Joe will fill it and then use it. But we'll do overseed it, we'll fertilize it, but the key's going to be trying to keep kids off it so it doesn't grow.
Right. Great. The other thing that I saw, something posted somewhere about Wald Duck School, where they're going to fix the playground over there.
Yeah.
Again, looking for CPC funds to do that, which I think is great, but I just want to make sure that it's not-
Other side.
Other side, right. So it's not interfering with the field that we're hoping to put over that area from Toll Brothers. Right. So if you can, just in case their thoughts are, we can move it over here, maybe you can just tell-
Yeah, I've had very little discussion with the superintendent, just to be aware of it, but we'll make sure that they're not going to, it's outside the limit of where the field is going to go. Field going where it is, back towards Toll Brothers, so it's not coaching back towards the school.
Right.
We'll just make sure we're on the same page on that.
Right. Thanks.
Good. I'm waiting to see for the seven-fifteen Services Anniversary Award for thirty-five years. I'm hoping that Selectmen Kern's going to be able to issue that on the move from the airport. But prior to going to that, what I was wondering, if maybe we could go to the new business, further in our agenda, and just address some of the discussed vote, one-day liquor licenses, if that's possible.
Take them out of order.
It appears to be, it looks like we have one that's from Riva at the Sitewood Maritime Center, and for June seventeenth from twelve to four P.M. And the second one happens to be for Ellen McKenzie, again at the Sitewood Maritime Center on June sixteenth from ten A.M. to two P.M.
Want a motion, Sean?
Yeah.
Will the board second approve the one-day wine and malt license to Ellen McKenzie for an event at the Sitewood Maritime Center on June sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, from ten A.M. to two P.M.?
Second.
Okay, so a discussion. Just on our agenda, it's at the seventeenth. Is it the eighteenth or the seventeenth? Just want to make sure.
Oh. Uh, back upstairs.
I have the sixteenth.
The motion says sixteen.
Is that what they said?
Yep.
Oh, okay, okay. So you're moving for the Ellen McKenzie one, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, they're backwards.
So, Marianne, just to let you know, we just did a motion for Ellen McKenzie, June sixteenth, made by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Canfield.
Okay.
And Mr. Vignani is-
A little house clean.
-I was saying, he was cleaning, which is nice.
They should clean for the-
You want to get your vote on Riva?
Not yet.
The maritime was-
We're going to get to that after, after we clean up this mess. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, I want you to answer this. I'll entertain a second motion if we could, for the next one.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve one-day malt and wine license to Riva for an event at the Sitewood Maritime Center on June seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, from twelve P.M. to four P.M.
Second. Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so that takes care of that. Looking at this right now, I guess-
Deputy Thompson is in the hallway.
I wonder if we could ask, if we could ask Deputy Thompson, he had to come in. Jim, that would be great.
We're doing the simulcast.
So I'm going to ask you to go to the discussion vote, communications, simulcast, and a P-25 project contract. For this, we have Deputy Mark Thompson, Deputy Chief. Deputy Chief, how are you?
Doing well, thank you. How are you?
Good, good. So just if you could, tell us exactly what we're doing here with the contract.
Sure. So, if we recall, probably about three years ago, we were here and we talked about the radio project. We did the first phase, which had to do with building out the network, build onto the fire department network that they had put there. Alcom was the vendor at the time, and that basically gave us coverage across four different towers. Two of those towers did transmit. One was a backup receive site, the other one was a primary receive site. So we, at that time, knew that we would be going to a second phase. This phase is now here before us. So this was approved at the town meeting back in April, so the funding is available. Nancy advised it, it's available funds, so we wanted to move forward with the contract. Alcom is the vendor again, who's on state contract. We've gone through and done our due diligence with them, we put together the proposal. Contract comes out to a hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars, which is for the hardware and the implementation of the services. One of the big pieces of this, if you remember, in addition to the simulcasting, which will now allow us to basically have transmit and receive over all four towers, geographically dispersed throughout the community, this also gives us the P-25 licenses. So P-25 is that radio standard that's used across the country for public safety transmissions. So this will put us in standard with that and get us up to the digital radios.
How many, I forgot, Mark, how many radios is that? Is that like twelve or-
With this one, we're building up, there are a couple on the backside here, which were on page two. It's an additional ten mobile radios, which are what goes in the cruiser, an additional ten portables.
That's it.
But overall, that gives us about fifty portable radios, and then throughout all the cruisers. So this was building onto that second phase. We did the primary ones first, this is kind of the secondary.
Gotcha.
And then there's all the hardware that will go into each of the different sites. Carolina Hill and Marshfield, the tower right behind us here, Bear Hill and Cohasset, and then the Noah Building and the harbor.
Questions, anybody?
I, was this the same number that was in the capital budget? I just don't have it.
I think one-sixty was in the capital budget.
Yeah.
So we had a couple grand in there, just in case, but the quote that came in, it was the one-fifty-seven change.
Okay. That's, thank you.
Monthly charges?
No monthly charges.
Annually?
No. So right now, we're doing timely materials on a contract basis with them, and the fire department is doing the same thing as far as how the support is going. We've got a great relationship with Rem and Wright Down, they've really been standing behind everything that they're doing. So because we kind of have that continuity now through our public safety, when they're here and anything that we're dealing with, they're looking at both systems.
Good.
How long will it take to implement it?
I think we're probably looking at second or third of the week, July, starting the project. A lot of the hardware will come in before that, but we won't look into doing a cutting over to the simulcast into the digital until after we get through the July fourth holiday. We won't want to make any substantial changes prior to any of that happening. And then this allows us to basically get onto their roadmap, so as they're doing their other projects, they'll now kind of have us plugged in. So the equipment in terms of mobile and portable radios, we'll be able to put to use right away as soon as we get them.
And coverages get better?
Coverage will be significantly better, and particularly, so one of the things we have now, and you can find if you go north just over the line and you sit at like the office on parking lot, you'll be able to hear what's going on, but not be able to transmit or receive, and same thing happens just when you get over onto the other side. So by bringing in Bear Hill, by bringing Carolina Hill, it's going to make a big difference for us.
Any other questions?
Just a coincidence, President's name of that company?
Yeah.
No relation?
None.
Right.
I asked him that question, too.
Well, I know, but just for the audience, Budrow, Paul Budrow, and I just, I said, I know, but.
All right.
How about a motion?
Motion, someone?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract per Massachusetts State Contract F-I-R-four for the procurement of digital simulcast communications equipment and services, contract number eighteen, P-O-eighteen, to Alcom Technologies of Revere, Mass., in the amount of one thousand, wait, one-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars, as specified in their quotation dated September twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen.
Motion by Ms. Canfield.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Aye, get in.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, seeing that it is seven-fifteen, I was wondering if you, Mark, could ask the gentleman and family if they would like to come in.
The other man in blue.
We're going back to our seven-fifteen, the Service Anniversary, thirty-five-year award. And so... Chief, good evening. Come on up. Have a seat, have a seat here, come on up. So, I'll just wait to make sure everybody gets in.
The fan club.
So, I apologize for keeping you in the hall. I was hoping that Selectman Kern could hear.
Quite all right.
She's on her way from the airport, that's why she thought she'd be here by seven-fifteen, so, but I don't want to keep you and the other members of your family waiting. But I have the distinct pleasure and honor of saying thank you for thirty-five years of dedication to the town of Sitewood. You know, people don't realize that public service can't be measured or quantified by money alone. It's based on service to others. Thirty-five years is a long time to serve other people in your community, and it's not at the expense of others either. And I find that, you know, it's a chance that you are able to make a difference in people's lives, you have, and, you know, to your community. And on behalf of the Board, I just have to say thank you. For people in the audience to understand, but also who are watching on TV, Chief Michael Stewart was hired June nineteen-eighty-three?
Yes.
Sean was what, you know, graduating college at that point?
Not quite.
I actually was a sophomore in high school. But I get a kick because in addition to that, you became a detective nineteen-ninety-six, and then a detective sergeant nineteen-ninety-seven. You're on the, I want to make sure I get it right, the, signed seven years with the Federal Bureau of Investigations, the FBI, for the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Strike Force, working on major drug issues on the South Shore and also on North Shore, I think, too, Mike, it was all over the place. And, you know, obviously, you became the chief of our town in two thousand and thirteen. But what I think is really extraordinary, and I think that's, it's worth saying, is that it's not just you, it's something that your family has nurtured, both for you and your siblings, and I understand that obviously your son is now enrolled with, is it the Worcester Fire Police Department, or is he-
Worcester Police, he's going through the process now.
And so people understand, and please, I see, you know, your great-grandfather, chief of police, back in the nineteen-thirties?
Early thirties.
Your father, fire department, thirty years and chief of the fire department for fifteen.
Yes.
Sister, state police, and she's still-
She retired as captain in charge of the fire and explosive unit.
And your uncle, or great-uncle, was with the police department, correct?
Bud Jones, yeah.
And cousin also, and, you know, your uncle, obviously former, Mike Stewart, I mean, Brian Stewart was our chief of police. So I just look at this and I say, people don't understand what it's like. I mean, we can complain about different things, but you're living it day in and day out, and I can just say, it's no other distinct honor to say thank you. Thirty-five years is a long time. The people don't realize that it's not just a nine-to-five job, it's all night, you're getting the phone calls, you're leaving, it's odd hours, it's holidays, it's vacations, or, you know, the people on vacations, holidays, you're doing the job, just like many of your coworkers, but I'm like, a lot of people in the private sector, people who live in town, don't understand that. And so on behalf of the Board, I want to say thank you, and also to your family, for giving up the time for those special moments for holidays to share, so that you're doing service for the town and your community. So I'm going to open it up to the Board, but I just wanted to say thank you personally on behalf of the Board as Chairman.
Well, first-
I'll give it first, because you're senior.
Well, I've known Mike, I don't know, at least those thirty-five years, graduated high school with my brother and my wife. My dad often talked about his dad playing football together right here at the high school. That was so well put. The only thing I can add, what's really neat, is anytime a resident calls us for something to do with the police department, I call Mike, and if he doesn't answer his phone, he calls me back very, very quick. And I can't say thank you enough. George hit the nail right on the head. It's twenty-four hours a day, you eat, live, sleep, all the time. And I get it, I understand, I appreciate it. Thank you very, very much, Mike, appreciate it.
Sure. First of all, I like seeing you look uncomfortable there, you don't like the praise. Second of all, you don't look like you've been at work anywhere for thirty-five years, so I think we've got a lot more years out of you. And not to be repetitive, but I was on the search committee for the new chief, and we had people from all over the place coming in, from other areas of Massachusetts, from out-of-state, and it was a pretty arduous process, you know, we went through the interview process, you had the testing, you had all this sort of stuff, and at the end of the day, it was just so clear that you were the perfect candidate. I mean, we had people that had more experience and that had been a chief somewhere else, and, you know, people could have come in and done the administrative part of the job, but they're missing what you had, and that's heart, and just you love the town, and you'll do anything for the town to make it, you know, a great place to live and protect the citizens and all this, and that just came out so much in the interview process that you just blew the other candidates away, and it was really a no-brainer decision when it got right down to it. So, and you haven't, you know, you haven't let us down in the ten, eleven years I've been up here. You performed like a champion and really supported all the causes of the town that are important. You care about all the kids, you know, you know all the kids, you know what's going on in town like the back of your hand, and I think it's, you know, a valuable asset to the town. So thank you for all the stuff you've given us and give to me success.
Thanks.
Well, luckily, most, everybody said everything, except a couple of things I wanted to add. When I first came on board as the newest member, Chief Stewart gave me a tour of the new public safety complex, and we stopped at the display at the front, and he said, there's my uncle, there's my father, there's my cousin, and it's, you not only have served this town so well, but you've done with distinction, and I just wanted to say, what I've watched, you know, as, you know, the newest member, is I appreciate how proactive you are on, when things need attention, you're the first one to say, hey, we need to pay attention to this. And to that, I think the Board is indebted, greatly indebted. And can I present?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, first, I would like everybody just to say thank you.
I'm not lucky.
An alarm clock.
I don't think you've ever been there.
Recognition of thirty-five years of dedicated service.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you for coming, because, you know what, this is a big deal.
Yeah.
And I know sometimes when people with their years of service, it's, you know, like, wow, so be it, you shrug it off, it's not. It is a very big deal to have somebody who's been dedicated for that amount of time, in any job, let alone a public service, but I just want to say thank you, Mike. It's, well, well, sir, thank you very much.
I came here to thank you. All right, the pleasure's been on my hands.
Photo ops, you want to-
Oh, yeah, we totally want photo ops.
Yes.
I saw you with your phone.
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah, somebody else that had a phone.
Go ahead.
That's perfect. Get all the cops in the background.
Police officers.
Thank you.
And we're going to make them work again.
Sorry, no more.
Mike, you might as well stay there, because you're-
Yeah, now we're going to make it work.
So I guess we're going to move on to the next one, Chief, and that happens to be the July third closure of Humrock Beach.
Last year, the Board went along with the recommendation, we closed Humrock Beach. There was a lot of concern for, you know, what's going to happen if we displace several thousand kids that we had routinely allowed to congregate there. It didn't become anywhere near the problem that we thought it might. We paid close attention to the other beaches up on the mainland, was not a problem up here. We worked closely with the Marshfield Police Department to make sure that we didn't displace and cause them a lot of heartburn with what we were doing. There were, instead of several thousand kids, or probably several hundred kids, in the Rexham Dunes, you know, on the beach. Marshfield kept them from getting into their neighborhoods, we kept them from getting into our neighborhoods. Eventually, it dispersed on its own. We're going to work closely with Marshfield again this year. What we'd like to do is again, close the beach. This is, hopefully, the last year I'm going to come before you to do that. My goal is to open the beach up to families next year. We had great conversation with a lot of people who were in the square last summer. Lot of, previous summers, you couldn't do it, it was just total chaos, you didn't get a chance to communicate with people and talk and things like that. Every mom and dad, your grandparents who went by with strollers and things like that, thanked us for what we were doing. They could finally come and go to the beach opening and watch what was going on, and they weren't exposed to the nonsense that was taking place. Routinely, if we don't go to twenty, thirty, sometimes forty fights on July thirty in Humrock, then it's not July third, not one. Because the kids, as they, you know, when the kids dispersed from the beach in a group of several thousand, they ended up at people's parties, and they weren't welcome, and that caused huge problems. On top of that, we would have routinely eight to twelve kids, I mean, fourteen, fifteen-year-old kids, who couldn't even tell us their parents' name or cell phone numbers. They were so inebriated, we would ship them off to the hospital, on top of the ones that we would keep and try to reunite with parents. And then you have your series of arrests for disorderly assault and battery police officers and other things. Last year, we did not need a single arrest, not one arrest on July third, not up here, not down there. So what I'm asking the Board to do this year is to, you know, give us one more year of this. We, you know, as the beach is closed, we are educating a lot of people on why we're doing it, and that it will be open next year. The year after, we're not going to allow kids to congregate. We're breaking that habit, we're breaking the mold, so to speak, and I even think that it's going to be less of a problem in the Rexham Dunes, because that wasn't fun for the kids. You know, they had nothing to do, and I think they're going to find other places to be. These weren't Sitewood kids who were causing the problem down there, these were kids from all over, from Charlestown, from Hanover, Pembroke, you name it, they came because it was pretty much kind of a free-for-all. You know, there's no stopping them from coming over the bridge, and there was no stopping them from congregating on a public beach. By the time we get down there, generally, it was more or less out of hand on us, you know, before it was even dark. So, you know, respectfully, I'd like that opportunity to do it again, and as I indicated last year, our goal is to make, continue to make July very family-friendly and safe. We've done a pretty good job of that over the years, and, you know, I think this is going to be the final year that we really have to work out of.
Questions on the board, tell me.
Yeah, Mike, last year when we closed it, I was down there right, actually, when we were closing it, you were closing at like around four o'clock, and I know there were families, and that's not quite the time when kids are congregating to get down there.
Yeah.
I didn't know how we could still keep that available for families to go and have a piece of pizza when it's still light out, as opposed to stop putting the barricades up that early.
It was close in that we would routinely get down there about six-fifteen, and, you know, the guys would show up to work at six o'clock at night and be prepared to work till at least two in the morning. Would have a brief roll call and had, you know, the Humrock officers went right down there at six-fifteen, there were a couple three thousand kids already set up. So what we were trying to do is get ahead of that.
Right.
And we did have, when I get down there at four-thirty, which was the time that we did last year, I believe, there was only a couple people remaining on the beach, and they came off thanking us.
Yeah, I guess more people, because I remember people were kind of turned away from going on to the beach. If you just use your discretion, if it's a couple grandparents and two grandkids- If you just use your discretion, if it's, if it's a couple grandparents and two grandkids...
As we did last year.
Yeah. I left, so I don't know what happened, but...
It's gonna be the same. That's what we want, this beach area, just like Sand Hills and Peggity has become just that. And, you know, it's a, it's a great opportunity for people and their families to get out and, you know, see what's going on on the beach, enjoy a small campfire, see some fireworks going off in the distance. We're never gonna try to spoil that completely.
No, I just, I think this is a great example of where you've been proactive in solving a problem, and I think it's, it worked great, and we should continue it, for sure.
Hopefully, it's a little bit easier for you and your staff, Mike, second time around. It was just a matter of time before someone's gonna really seriously get hurt. And then we'd be, you know, oh, we should've done something, to Karen's point.
Yeah, we've cut over the years. We had a state police presence, we've cut that. We had, you know, motorcycles from Cohasset Police and other, we've cut. And, you know, we have a core group of the Situate contingent that can handle this at this point.
Right.
And I think, you know, we're definitely in the right direction. And next year, I think we can obviously lift the regulation, and we'll monitor it closely from four o'clock in the afternoon to make sure no kids are getting established there.
Yes, sorry I'm late to everyone, I apologize. It worked out great last year, Chief, so in full support of it.
We received, I hope you did as well, but we received a lot of compliments on how it went last year. People down there were thrilled they'd never experienced, and you're talking thirty, forty years of being down there, and that people had never experienced such a quiet, nice evening.
I have to say, that's great. Because I remember, this is a real mess for the police department, for the town, and you had zero arrests last year. That's phenomenal. And if you were to consider it again, maybe next year, later, six o'clock or something, I, I might be, another idea. Again, just to make sure that going forward, you've broken that mold, but I think it's great, so. Now, do you need a motion, Chief? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Yeah, I think we do need a vote on that. So, is there a vote, a motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the closing of the area known as the Public Beach in Humrock at four thirty PM on Tuesday, July 3rd, 2018, to extend until morning.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All those signified by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Chief, congratulations. I apologize it was not here. Thirty-five years, fabulous. You're a great chief, and you have a great force, and thank you for all your leadership.
Yeah, I do. Thank you.
All right. Now, we're gonna go back to, what's a seven twenty, public hearing, discuss vote on Kentsha Restaurant Group, DBA, Hook and Harvest, for change of manager, transfer of stock, change of beneficial interest, and transfer of license, Kara Tondorf and Caitlin Tondorf. They're here.
I believe they are.
Tell you what, why don't we jump over that one and see if they're maybe a little tardy, and we'll move over to the next, which happens to be a discussion vote on a Harker Peddler license application. Lola Jane, Robin, Kate, Robin, come on up. Now, the last time we saw you, Robin, was a month ago, maybe?
Yes, just about a month ago, yes, correct.
And I thought you were going to be touching base with the police department, correct me if I'm wrong, in terms of location.
Yes, sir.
In Peggity. And have you done that?
Yes, I met with Officer Billings a bit ago, a week or so ago, at the Peggy Beach Parking Lot, and decided that as you pull into the Peggy Beach Parking Lot, if you would go down to that back corner and then take a sharp left, there's a series of sort of sand dunes right there. That's where he and I agreed it would be the best place. Originally, it was gonna be that corner, but he did let me know that on really high tides, that it tends to get a little bit flooded there. So, that's what we came up with, that's what, in his opinion, was the best place for me. And the way that we left it was, let's start with that, and if we need to move, we move.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Is it, so, just so, so it's the left of the showers and stuff?
Uh, no, it would be, so, okay, so pull into the parking lot, and I think those first couple spaces are perhaps public, I'm not quite sure. But if you just pull into that direct corner right there, and then take a sharp left as if your vehicle would be pointing towards the beach, it's a series of sand right there.
So, on the back of those houses?
Or on the marsh side?
It's on the, it's on the marsh side. The front of it would be looking directly at where the, that's sort of the showers are and the surf company, that's directly there.
Right along the side of the surf.
Yes, but set back far enough where it's sort of away from everything.
Great. I had a few questions when you were here the first time. I don't know if anyone's here, I haven't seen anyone here, about it. So, that was my concern, that the public had a chance to do it. I spoke with a number of people about it. Everyone is looking forward to it, so it's a very positive feedback that I've gotten. And if you haven't heard anything, no one's called up or said anything about it.
Not at all. Just positive things I've heard as well.
So, I don't have any problem with that location, or is there a shot?
I did ask the Beach Commission about, you know, because they, they're charged with these things, and they thought it was a great idea, too. Their only concern, of course, which we talked about last time, was just make sure no trash is floating around the parking lot.
Absolutely. When I develop the menu, there's gonna be a lot of things where it's minimal. We'll take our...
That was, they liked the idea, but they were, that was their only concern.
That was my question as well, is just trash and additional DPW resources, because I, I just can see that the trash will increase quite a bit, especially over by the entrance to the beach. And the only other issue that I wanted to raise was, do we think it needs to be until eight o'clock at night? With dusk probably being, what, around eight thirty, I'm guessing, in the late beginning of summer? I just don't know if that's too late, but that was my only concern. I was thinking if seven thirty might be a little bit better.
I mean, truth be told, I put that down just to, this is sort of a new thing, so if seven thirty works better, then that's...
Yeah, it's not a big deal to me. I was just curious with regards to it being later in the day, and...
And to speak to the, to the trash, I mean, you know, we can provide two trash barrels on premise that when we leave, they'll come with us, and no one will have to do anything except mess.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Robin, were you gonna take the vehicle out of the parking lot at night? Are we gonna leave it there?
I would, I mean, ideally, if, I would like to leave it for a couple, you know what I mean, a couple days. I do know that, I think when we spoke previously, that perhaps there was some concern of vandalism, which I share as well. I'm hoping that's not the issue, that's really the only concern there, because everything will be locked up, you know, it's pretty self-sufficient, the unit.
Yeah, that's my only concern. I wouldn't want to see you...
Right.
I think if, if it's okay, we could play it by ear, and if it becomes an issue, then it just comes with it. But as far as my vehicle, I would show and drop off the trailer, and then even my vehicle stops and parks by another state.
My concern about the neighbors, I haven't talked about it. And if then something pops up, I'm sure you'll be a comedy...
Oh, a hundred percent. And I let everyone, you know, I'm easy to reach, so.
I could just add that you had requested that Robin notified me about us, which she has done, and we have a copy of that letter on file also, so she has notified me.
I gave all my contact information, both personal and at the restaurant email, so.
So, my only comment is that if there's a major problem, not a minor problem, but a major problem, we'd probably be saying, "Come back in and talk to you about it." Like, if garbage were all over the place, or if there was some leakage and, you know, of oil or something like this, and, you know, vegetable oil, whatever you used to fry, then we'd bring you back in. I have no problems waiting till, I say eight, only because my feeling is, let's see how it goes. You know, if you're gonna close at seven thirty, you're gonna close at seven thirty. You might want to keep it open till eight if it's a Friday and it's a great evening. It gives you that flexibility. And obviously, if it becomes an issue with the neighbors, then we'll address it when and if it comes. But I'd say right now, I, that's my feeling on that.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I just raised it as a...
Sure, sure. And just to clarify, we're not even gonna have any type of oil or fire lit or anything like that, because it's so messy, so I just eliminated the whole.
Gotcha, okay.
I just took it out.
But if you leave your trailer there, it's on you. You know, obviously, whatever it is, it's your responsibility, it's like, and it's not on the town's...
Understood.
...liability or anything like that.
Understood, yes.
Situation. Other than that, I have no other observations. Anybody else? Motion?
Move to grant Lola Jane LLC a Harker, Harker Peddler's license seasonally, April through October, from eleven AM to eight PM, in accordance with the Selectmen's policy and inspection by the Board of Health.
All right. Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Move to allow Lola Jane LLC to park at the Peggy Beach Parking Lot as outlined during the Board of Selectmen meeting, how about that? Through October, from eleven AM to eight PM, without moving their vehicle to another location. There you go, you had it covered.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Robin, thank you so much.
Robin, when do you think?
When's grand opening?
Soon. Now we're gonna get a cook. Thank you so much.
Robin, thank you very much.
Excited.
Mr. Chair, before we go, can I just, Jim, usually every year around this time, we get many extra barrels out at the beaches because they fill up very quickly over the weekends, and with the weather hopefully turning positive at some point in time, we really, you couldn't put too many barrels at Peggity. You really, you could put ten of them there, and they'll get filled up. So, if you can just remind DPW to get a bunch of them by the entrance. Thank you. Thanks, Sean.
All right. Gonna move on. Let's get on to our seven thirty-five discussion, strike that, we just did that. The seven forty discussion update on the Situate Town Library Community Room, HVAC. Joe Sullivan, Joe, how are you? OPM Daileus, and then Noel Murphy. Noel's here. And then we also have...
Thank you.
Conrad.
Conrad. Conrad, how are you? All right.
And Kevin Kelly.
Kevin Kelly, Kevin, I'm sorry. So, gentlemen, a week ago, we were informed that the building, Public Building Commission had addressed and voted on authorizing, I guess you could say, attempt to fix the situation that currently exists in the basement library conference room. In essence, it's rendered useless because it's too noisy, because of the, is it a air handler or...
Impression.
Or what's, in the...
Air handler.
Air handler in the abutting closet that's next to it, correct?
Correct.
And so, we wanted to talk to you because we want to find out what exactly is going on. We'd like to get this project done. I wouldn't be surprised, all three of you want to get it done and move on. But we want to make sure it's done and that it's fixed, so that the room is functional and useful. So, I'd asked that you come this week so we could discuss it, find out what we're doing, and making sure that what we're going to do is going to fix it so that you folks can move on and the town can use the building and be happy.
Great.
So, Joe, I'm gonna turn to you, you're OPM. So, why don't you tell us exactly where we're at, and then we'll go from there.
So, back in September, we reported to you that we did some miscellaneous items to try to rectify it the simplest way we possibly could, and obviously, those were unaffected. So, we were, left this room tasked with the obligation to come up with a solution that would be long-term and that would work for the betterment of the library. At that point, we held, we held a meeting with the Architect of Record as well as the engineer involved as far as that designed the acoustical and mechanical of that unit. So, we, the issue, and it came down to a couple of things. We wanted to resolve it once and for all, and, you know, we tried a couple of simpler fixes which were ineffective. So, we wanted to engage an acoustical engineer, and Oden Melos actually created a meeting along with the acoustical, the mechanical engineer, and the team, the architectural team to meet onsite to kind of actually hear the noises, deal with, you know, different testings that occur during that duration, to come up with a solution. So, at that meeting, we walked, both the acoustical engineer, the mechanical engineer, and the architect walked away with some information. They did a lot of calculations, they did some noise calculations for acoustics, and they all went back to their offices and kind of brainstormed to figure out what would best solve the situation of not only the mechanical noises that are being transferred, but the the air filtration noises that occur in that space. At that point, we re-engaged, and we came up with a few solutions. And I want to say, there were probably six weeks' worth of transmission back and forth regarding that. You know what I'll do is, we have a course of events and a list of events that occurred through that duration that I'd like to have Oden Melos give. Just so you can see, it wasn't just a, you know, we took it, we ran with an idea, and we found out with it. There was a lot of extensive, detailed information that evolved through all the meetings that had occurred, and even with the final result or recommendation from the Engineering Record and the Acoustical Engineer, I felt it would improve the town of Situate to have a third-party engineer review that just to, for a check and balance, just because, it's not that I didn't have a solid base that they would come up with a solution, but I wanted to make sure that, you know, we had a third-party look at it independently, just to say, "Yes, we think it'll work," or, "No, that's not the direction I think you should go," and look at things a little differently. So, all of that happened over the last six months, and we actually put together a set of documents, and we decided that we would try to solicit contractors outside of the general contractor to see if we could try to cut some savings on the overall project that we're doing. And we solicited the bids for a little over four weeks, extended it for additional, too, and we had no bids on the overall project, because it's kind of a complex project, in an occupied renovated, you know, it'd be a renovated work that would be associated with the library. And so, at that point, we kind of regrouped and went back to the general contractor and said, through Snowden, who did the original installation, to try to re-engage them back into the process. We had a long discussion, meeting with them, we provided the plans and documents to them. Their workload had significantly opened up because they had completed a number of projects, and they were very interested in making sure that the project was completed and it met all of the needs to the Situate Library, because they had a better interest in that overall project to start with. They didn't want to install something that wasn't gonna work, obviously. So, that being said, they were able to provide us a cost associated with it. We reached out to the electrical contractor and the general contractor to see if we could get some numbers for electrical services that would be needed during this renovation as well as the demo. Those numbers came in somewhat high. I took the responsibility to go out and solicit other numbers outside of that, and we were able to significantly cut those drastically. So, that being said, we were able to finally put a hard number together, go to the building committee, showed them exactly what, all of the information from the third-party review, the acoustical engineer and the Engineering Record, and provided documentation and literature to show that everybody felt confident and comfortable that this silencer and restoration would work for the town of Situate's library. That's a Reader's Digest version.
Okay. Question I have on that is, if Snowden came back with a quote to fix it, so we have another contract bid for something that's less than, or Snowden's the one that's gonna be going?
No, we didn't, we didn't receive any bids on that.
Okay.
So, this would be through the general contractor, which would be a change order to the general contractor. We met with the general contractor, he's not putting any markup on this. The only thing he would cover himself on is the bond and insurance associated with this work. So, it's basically they're doing it at whatever the, the transfer costs from subcontracting.
And that amount is for approximately sixty-five thousand?
Yeah, it's fifty-one thousand for this, for these HVAC contractor. Approximately, we held an allowance of fourteen thousand dollars for the demo, the pending patching, and... My feeling is that it's gonna be less than that fourteen thousand dollars, but I didn't want to limit myself.
And of this amount, I understand Odin...
Odin's LO, yeah.
Is going to contribute approximately twenty-five thousand towards it.
That's a, it's a combined contribution from Odin's LO Architecture and Cosentini Associates, the mechanical engineer for the project. And that's in recognition, I'll, this is, I'm Conrad LO Principal at Odin's LO, and this is just in recognition of, you know, understanding that this is a repair or a fix that we're doing after the building's finished. Obviously, there's work that's gotta be undone in order to get something installed that really should have been installed during the course of construction, and so we acknowledge that and want to contribute to that, to that fix.
So, are we confident, and I'll turn over my board in a second, are we confident that this is going to remedy, I mean, to make this room functional, that's all? I know we've gone through expert, expert, third expert, and that's great, but are we confident that this is gonna fix it?
From all of the engineers and the acoustical engineers of Record, feel very confident that this will solve... From all of the engineers and, and the acoustical engineers at Record, feel very confident that this will solve the situation over there.
And I was, I was, I was speaking with the town administrator this afternoon. Are we putting some, the silencers, like baffles or something, in the ducts, is that what's going on?
Do you want to explain that a little bit? Yeah, I can quickly just explain the two major problems and the solutions to those problems. So, um, I just want to stress, the problem is mostly sound rather than heating and cooling performance. Um, so there's two sources of sound. One is just the fan noise of the system getting trans- transmitted through the ductwork out into the space. There was no silencer installed during the construction, which probably should have been installed. Um, so the sound is passing straight into the space, so you can hear basically the engine running in the space. Um, so that's one cause. The other one is there's a compressor in the unit that turns on and off, um, every, depending on the season. Could be every fifteen seconds, and it's a thudding sound, and it vibrates the whole unit. Because of the size of that space, we can't go in and isolate that compressor any more than it already is. So that's going to get moved out of the unit into a separate space further from the room, and put on vibration isolators, um, so that that rattling is limited and the sound is, is more, um, isolated by more walls, essentially. The noise coming through the ductwork will be addressed by the silencer. So it's really two, two problems and two somewhat independent solutions to those problems.
Can you explain how a silencer works?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it is essentially baffles. I can't get too far into the, the technical aspects, because I, I'm not the engineer, but, um, it will be an, an eight-foot section of ductwork, um, that essentially makes the air pass through a series of baffles that kills the, the fan noise. Um, there's been a lot of thought that's gone into the actual product that will be used to limit, and there's different frequency bands, um, and there's a, I think we're trying to reduce the low-frequency noise, so this silencer is designed to reduce low-frequency noise. But it's, it's basically a specialized piece of ductwork that's larger than standard ductwork and includes the baffles within it.
And it's, it's a transition of metal to metal, and there's a, there's a gasket, rubber gassing that separates the two, so you don't get transmission of mechanical noises to the library.
This is, this is all underground ductwork, so there's a piece of the floor within a storage room that has to be removed in order to drop that silencer in. I'm sure you can appreciate why we tried these troubleshooting measures that were less invasive when we, you know, before we came to you in September. Obviously, those didn't work, and so this is a more invasive, but, but the proper way to solve it, you know, to your question about, you know, do we feel confident it's going to work? We've got, um, engineers that you, you hired to design the library that are confident that it's going to work. And if it doesn't work, um...
I'll even address it.
The town, that's a totally different conversation, but we, we certainly, you know, worked really hard over the last eight or nine months to come up with a solution that we feel confident in. Otherwise, we would have been, you know, wasting nine months of time.
And I'm assuming the floor is concrete, that's one of the reasons why we have to, that's going to be a little more special.
Just one other question, the compressor, we're not moving that to, where, where's that moving? It's not going to start disturbing the kids' room or the teen room?
It's going to the outside storage closet area, and that's all been insulated, so we take...
It's actually an, an outdoor room, it's a dedicated tool storage room that's in the most remote corner of the library, so it basically builds in a second room of buffer between the program room and where that can, can...
So when you go in the program room, it's going to be to the back left?
It's going to be outside, actually. If you go, if you, if you go to lower level, if you look to the left, there's a double set of doors, the storage room doors, it'll be in that room. So, it actually won't even be in the storage room or community room that it currently resides in right now.
Good.
Couple of questions, um, so it looks like you're projecting a two-week construction for this timeline, is that what this?
Three, three weeks.
It's three weeks?
Yeah, so it's June eleventh, ends around the twenty ninth.
Um, and then the actual impact on the public space, it's all going to be done in that back room?
Correct. So we, we went, we actually met recently just to kind of go over the sequence, and we're going to try to get a lot of the miscellaneous components done this next week as far as the relocation of, uh, the refrigeration pipe, uh, some of the electrical wiring that's going to be needed to run into that back room before the dismantling of that unit occurs. In addition to that, we're going to be providing temporary, uh, air conditioners in that space, so the, the space can still be used even when the unit is down for that period of time during the transition of the installation of that silencer.
Okay, to minimize the impact on programming and...
There won't be any impact on the program. We've already, we've already going to work around the schedule that's already been programmed.
Okay. Is it possible to break out the baffler cost component of this? Because obviously that's something we should have had and paid for when we built the building and it was overlooked. Can, is there any in your cost estimates?
Yeah, I can probably get a cost associated with that.
Just of the sixty, how much is related to that? Because in our, you know, arguably, that should have been in the project costs upfront, is my...
Because you would have paid for it at bid day.
Exactly.
Just to be clear on that, so...
Right.
I, I, just to clarify that, you didn't pay for it when you bid it.
Right.
So there was a cost associated, if it was included as part of the general conditions of the, of the bid documents, you would have had a fee associated with that, which would have increased the overall cost of the project.
Right.
Okay, just to, I just want to be clear on that.
Right, but I would argue that that's a component that was missed, but should have been in the project, so it...
I don't disagree with you, but I...
So I just wondered how much of that?
We can try to figure out a way to break out the values of, of the pieces.
And two last questions, um, on the new space where the air handler's going, will those are, are, is in the cost, are, are those walls going to be, that walls themselves going to be insulated? Is that anticipated, is it nece- is it needed, is it a problem to do that?
Those walls are already insulated, if I'm, if you're, are you saying the wall between...
The storage area? Where it's being placed?
Is insulated already, so we...
Just the regular, but there's no additional soundproofing or...
We talked about, yeah, we... Some additional material so that it, there's a better acoustic separation between that space and the interior of the building. It's also ver- it's already very good, but we will add some additional material.
We've already talked about adding materials in some way.
And the last question is, I know one of the interim steps was to insulate the actual compressor, and when Sean and I went out with, uh, you know, we brought in somebody just to have another set of eyes, there was concern that that would shorten the length of the life of that unit by overheating it? Has that been looked at again, or?
Well, we're moving that component.
Right, but it was wrapped before, I don't know if it's still wrapped.
It might be wrapped any longer.
It isn't, it won't be.
It'll have an insulation, but...
It'll have its own insulation, but not to...
But it won't be added insulation, that's correct.
And that's acoustic blanketing, that's what that is. So that's...
Right, and there was some...
That's different than the condenser, which is outside. The condenser for that unit is out, outside the building. The compressor has a blanket and then a, a field-constructed box over the top. We'll probably get rid of that field-constructed box.
That's what I'm suggesting, actually.
But there is also a, a acoustic blanket that wraps that will stay.
That's required as part of the unit.
Which is provided by the manufacturer.
I thought that was added.
We added the outside box, which was...
Okay, and not the wrap.
...out of the way, the blanket section that stays on the, on the compressor.
And that was part of the original installation?
Correct. And that's provided by the manufacturer. It's their product.
Oh, okay, so it doesn't affect the warranty or any of that?
No.
Okay, that's all I...
So my question may be more for Nancy. Hold, sorry, Nancy, put you on the spot, see you over there. So I'm just reading your letter here, um, that this offer is being combined with monies remaining in the contingency to cover the full costs, and this remaining contingency does not include the two-hundred thousand dollars still in the town's hands.
Correct.
Can you, can, um, someone just summarize that for me? I mean, I know we had two-hundred thousand, but I don't remember that we ever gave it back or moved it to a different account.
The, um, overall bid came in under approximately half a million dollars. And then, when the cost began, first, we had the asbestos, and then we had the issue with the roof. And, um, at the time, the town administrator talked to the board, and the board released some of those savings back to the Public Building Commission for, um, dealing with those issues to that contingency. And the last time you released, I think, was probably the fall of last summer, which was about twenty to thirty thousand dollars. There was still approximately two-hundred thousand dollars of the original half-a-million-dollar savings which have not been released, which is not available, um, to the Public Building Commission to address any remaining issues at the library without coming back before the board is elected and seeking the release of those funds. So there now, the Public Building Commission is left with what's left in the contingency from the last time...
And how much, when was that balance again?
You're dealing...
The combination?
...with the cost of the roof because they are, there are open purchase orders out there?
It's, it's over forty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay.
I give you a ballpark number.
So that gets us up to the sixty, if they need any more than that, we're going to have to come back before the board and ask for release of funds from the, the two-hundred thousand that's still sitting on there with half the budget.
So Nancy's correct, we did it in increments, if you remember, there was a roughly five-hundred thousand dollars. We came back initially for the initial roof and asbestos. And any of the funds that we needed in addition to that, we would come to the board, ask for permission, move some of those funds, cover some of the costs.
So what's, what's our share that you're asking for, or that the Public Building Commission already approved for this?
Forty-five thousand coming, um, to the, to the, the architect and the, the engineer.
So the balance of that?
Around thirty-seven thousand to forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we're not looking to ask the, we're not asking the board to transfer any money. This is used for the contingency that's already moved.
Sure, no, I got it, yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify. Yeah, no.
Public Building took it out to the C-bucks, we didn't care.
No, it's okay, I didn't mean, are you finished, or? And that's assuming that we have to use the additional fourteen. It looks like it's fifty-one thousand, you're giving yourself a buffer of fourteen, is what you said, Joe, I thought I'd written out.
So, so how, there's fifty-one thousand, fourteen, so we'll call it sixty-six thousand dollars. There's forty-seven roughly left in the contingency, with the twenty-five thousand dollars that Oden Melos is giving, it should be enough to cover the, the overall cost for the AHU repair in its entirety. That's what I'm basically saying.
I got you, now the fourteen thousand's the allowance for the demo and the painting, that's what the fourteen. Fifteen with the HVAC.
Correct.
Nancy?
Sean?
So you're still looking for thirty, twenty-five thousand? I don't care where it's coming, but it's coming from the taxpayers.
No.
Well, it's coming from the contingency, the savings.
Thirty-one thousand dollars, okay, twenty-five.
Ken, I just want to make one statement, I, I did, um, write a letter to you folks just beforehand. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to, to read it, but just to provide a little bit of context and, just to, just to, I want to clarify that over the course of this four-year project and all of the, all of the roof repairs that we've discovered, all along, Oden's LO Architecture has provided service to the town for free. We never asked for additional services for that additional roof. The extension of time that it took to, to repair the roof, there are many, there are many months of, of construction administration service that we provided full-time at the service of the town. That has a value, and that value far exceeds what this repair, um, is going to cost in total. Um, so, in effect, we've paid for this, this repair already through our, through our hard work, and I hope that you acknowledge that, um, there's a value to that. So when you talk about it coming out of the taxpayers' money, um, you know, that, that's, that's hard work that we gave to the town, professional services that we gave to the town for free.
Joe, wait, go ahead, finish.
You go ahead, Tom.
Well, I just, I was gonna, I was gonna thank you for, for the professional way that you've handled this, and you've donated money to TUI the whole time. I think some of those costs that you're referring to wouldn't have happened if the project had happened properly the whole time, but, but I will say you've been professional through the whole part, you've, you've taken responsibility for it, you've tried to find a solution, you've donated money and time as well, that's all duly noted. I think from, from Sean's point of view, you know, we hope we hadn't gone down this path, but I will say you've been stand-up through the whole process and been here at every meeting to answer our questions. So, I think we all just hope this solution works.
We do, yeah.
This was a difficult job. I've sat on the Public Building Commission since the beginning until just recently Karen wanted to see it through. I sat with the library and then the Public Safety Building, it was two different projects altogether. But there was change order after change order, and there were a lot of mistakes made. We should have looked a lot further at the building, should have closed the building down, but here it is Monday morning, so we can't be a Monday morning quarterback. I just have a, I'm, I'm very disappointed that part of the building, it's all brand-new, doesn't work. Karen and I brought someone in, he was here for five minutes, you probably know exactly what I'm going to say, and it's the wrong application for that unit. It belongs outside, it belongs on the roof. Compressor's not the issue, it's the fan. I hope I'm wrong, but I have a feeling I'm not. You guys want to wrap this job up, put it behind you, it was learned, learned an awful lot by this project, that's for sure. It would have been a lot easier to knock the building down and start from the ground up. But I was thinking today, last week, we had the group in here. One person wrote out a check for a hundred thousand dollars, and wasn't that? So, I know a little bit about this stuff, all right, and I know who to believe and who not to believe, all right? So, what am I doing as a selectman if I'm not standing up for that person that wrote out a hundred thou- a hundred thousand dollar check and then some, and all the other people that spent a lot of money, that had earned money to, to make this library to be the jewel of the town, okay? It's a broken leg and you're trying to put a Band-Aid on it, I'm sorry, it's not right. I hope I'm wrong, and I hope it's quiet, but I don't think it's going to work, okay? And I just want to make the record very clear that I don't support fixing it this way, because I don't think it's going to be the correct way to fix it, all right? The ductwork is all underneath, the way to fix it is probably mini-sports at this point, okay? Duckless system.
I hope you're wrong too, um, and if not, as I said, it'll be a different conversation, but, um, our professional engineers patently disagree with, with that, that it's the wrong approach.
Where are they, how come they're not sitting here telling you?
They have been in front of the PBC, and, you know, we can only get P- I mean, yes, we're here representing the design team.
Same engineers who put the insulation around the compressor, when Karen and I saw it, was that one of their ideas?
I don't, I don't know, that was...
That was the manufacturer's approves. So that, I, I don't think there's any dispute about whether or not that's okay. I mean, they recommended it, approved it, and are aware that it's installed. So, I don't, I don't think there was any harm to the warranty, uh, that was coming from, from there.
If that was left the way it was when Karen and I saw it?
I didn't realize it was the manufacturer that actually did it.
I don't care who did it, that's...
Well, then it's, if it doesn't, doesn't take the...
As I said, I hope I'm wrong, but I don't think this is the right way to fix it, all right? I'm just, I'm just telling you, you know? Very, very disappointed. If it was something that we were trying to retrofit, save from the old library, I would say, you know what? Tried, you know, you know, it didn't work. This is all brand-new. If I did it in someone's house, I'd be taking it out, putting it back in, fixing it the right way, okay? He wasn't there five minutes and said this is the wrong application. In fact, someone working on it might have told someone that when they were installing it. That's all I have to say.
So my question, um, just to follow up with Sean, is what's the recourse here? I know, you, you say, you know, we're going to figure that out, but you're asking, well, the Public Builder Commission already approved to give you thirty-seven thousand dollars, the share to fix this. If it doesn't fix it, I think the town should have some sort of clawback on that, and I don't know if it exists. That's my concern.
I think the town could seek damage at this time, and that's what we do.
So I think, I think that's for Conrad's point. First of all, I'm not sure the Public Building Committee has the authority, they can request that. We're the ones that I think have the authority to authorize, all right?
I think so.
That's, that's number one, and I'm just making sure.
Authorize.
Authorizing, like dispersing the, the monies, I think.
Or a change order.
Or a change order, okay, correct. Um, so they may have requested it, has to come to us, we're going to authorize it. Second is, is, and that's the discussion that we'd hope we're not going to have, but if that's the case, it is going to be a clawback, and, um, it will be a different discussion about, you know, who's going to be fixing it and paying it, and that's another discussion that's going to be a lot more terse, but that being said, at this point, let's hope this works. Any questions from the audience, anybody here? No, you're here probably for interviews, but, uh, this is a discussion about the library, so, um, all right. So what was the board's pleasure, um, what would you like to do?
Go forward.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we have to fix it. I'm not happy to be paying for it, though I don't think we should be paying for it, that's my personal opinion, but...
How do you think we're responsible for any of it?
It's like anything in, um, a, a, a complex construction project. You, you, you have a contingency for things that aren't perfect in the drawing set, that's part of what a contingency is for. There, there are other things in this project that were paid for through the contingency that were misses on the drawings or misses by engineers, and that's, that's part of a complex project. You can never get a project perfect. This is something that I regret happened. The mechanical engineer should have specified a, a silencer, it should have been caught during construction. It wasn't, both things didn't happen, it wasn't put in the design documents and it wasn't caught during construction. And I wish we weren't sitting here talking about it, but this is, you know, it, we're not in the business of, of paying for silencers, it should have been part of the scope of work. We, we do recognize this as a special situation because the building is done, and work has to be... We, we do recognize this as a special situation because the building is done, and work has to be undone, and we're, we're trying to, to make good on that by, by contributing to the fix. But, but, you know, a lot of what you're paying for is, is in, is in the actual products that are gonna go in the building and make it perform the way it should, and also in addressing a miss in the drawings, which, which all building projects, you know, encounter, especially complex ones.
Sean, how they actually look at it is that, and the AGs obviously can look at it this way, it's a betterment to the overall system. It didn't have it initially, you're adding it to the, to the system, and there's a cost associated with that betterment.
Up to Sean's point, it could also be the system is the wrong thing to begin with as opposed to a betterment.
That's a different argument, though.
No, I get you, Joe, I'm just saying, and I concede Sean's argument.
I, I don't disagree with, you know, his position.
So my question is, Jim, do we, are we and Nancy, we're the ones that should be authorizing this, right? Don't we need to vote to release the funds? I know the Public Building Committee did, but I don't think they have the authority. I looked at the charter, and the charter just says that they're, the commission should oversee the planning and construction. Is there anything about?
There's no funds to release, from a technical standpoint, because you gave the building committee a budget, and they're not exceeding that budget. If it went over that budget, you would need to vote to release additional funds back to them. So, they're operating within the funding that they currently have, so I don't think there's any release of funds. I think the only thing the board could do is if the board just said no, they could overrule the building committee. But the building committee's already voted to go ahead with this, I believe at this point, the last two meetings.
And the two-hundred thousand is completely locked down, nobody has any authority but the board.
That has to come back to you.
The board's in line. All right then, I guess there's not a need for a vote. I suspect we're gonna have this, I'll put this on as a agenda item in July, hopefully.
That was good news.
Very nice, Fourth of July, and we'll have a nice discussion.
Love to have a meeting in that room.
Actually, that's what I said last week.
That's a good idea.
Might have one there, okay?
We'll have a field trip.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time for coming and discussing it. All right, we're gonna move on to Brad, I think Brad, we're up for the open space grant, I'm sorry, open space plan grant. I don't know if it's in our package. I think Brad, it's just on a list, so I think you're gonna tell us some information about a grant on the open space?
Yeah, so this is actually not a grant, this is just a submission of a letter of support from the board. So the Open Space and Recreation Plan, which has been in the works for a little while now, we're planning to submit that probably next week to the Department of Conservation Services at the state. And this is the plan that needs to be in place if we want to get funding from them for the land grants, the park grants. You need this kind of document in place, so it's, again, it's not a grant, it's just a letter of support. And we've gotten Planning Board, Recreation Commission, CPC, and others to see, to receive similar letters that will accompany the submission to the state.
So we have a letter, Lorraine, that we're gonna be signing, is that what you're looking for, Brad?
Brad gave me a letter for you to sign, so I'll have it for you to sign tonight.
Okay. How does the board feel?
I do have a question. So Brad, this project, are we starting this from scratch again? Because we've, Laura started this with some people from the Rec Department years, a couple of years ago. Has that work been?
This, this is the culmination of that work, so when she left, it was about eighty percent complete.
Okay.
We just brought it to the finish line, kind of wrapped it up and, again, submitting it hopefully next week. And this is the, they're required to be updated every five years, so this is the update to the one that was completed in 2009, so it's been a few years, kind of delinquent, but.
Thanks.
I was gonna say, the only one I lose two thousand dollars.
Just that, both, I don't think Brad or Nancy were in the room when Jim was going through all of the grants received, and it's this kind of work that has, we've, in the first six months of the year, there's, what'd you say? Half a million dollars in grants? So this work is a great contribution to the town, because it helps pay the bills. So, yeah, it's great.
Brad, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wester.
So we're gonna move on to a discussion of vote, Old Country Way, no parking zone, traffic rules, and regulations. I guess Sean, that's you, correct? And Karen Joseph, our planner. So I'm gonna recuse myself because this deals with Old Country Way, office down there. So I'm gonna turn the gavel over to the vice chair, who's here. You haven't forgotten already.
I haven't, I think I still know how to swing my, my wrist.
My name is Sean McCarthy with the Engineering Division, tonight, here with a Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee member. And as John said, Karen Joseph, the town planner, has come with me only because this has gone on for a few months now. It deals with the Untold Brewery. The police have had issues with people parking on-street. And this is Old Country Way, the small side street on the bend of Country. They approached the intersections, they were parking on both sides, and it was making the roadway narrow for emergency access. I know Karen has been working with the operator.
We've been, the init, the police chief brought the complaint in, and so it went to Traffic Rules, and then it went back to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board is working with the applicant, with the original applicant and the tenant, to come up with a temporary solution and a permanent solution to the problem. So one of the first things to do as part of a temporary solution would be to have the traffic rules declare the street on one side no parking, so that it protects the public health, safety, and welfare, so that emergency vehicles can get down. But the, the tenant is going to be coming in very shortly to the Planning Board with an application for a temporary solution. It's gonna be an off-site temporary solution, but they are working to manage their traffic. It's just that the use has become very, it's a popular place, and that traffic, the parking spaces were all done in accordance with the bylaw, but it's just very a popular use.
So they'd be looking to make the side opposite the Untold Brewery.
Right.
A no parking, but would allow the on-street parking in front of the Untold Brewery. I think they can get four or five spaces without getting into the intersection of Country Way or Union Street.
I couldn't tell that on the drawing, how far that went.
They're not painted spots, though, it's just side of the road?
Correct, yeah, there isn't a restriction for on-street parking on that roadway. So this would create one on the northerly side, or I guess you'd say westerly if you were standing.
So if they park parallel on, on the, on their side of Old Country Way, emergency vehicles can still get by? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yeah.
What about the, the island itself, the grass island, is that, any of that public, or is it, can they park on that?
That's actually something we want to look into when the master plan, the master plan is gonna be starting this summer. We'd like to look at public land that's available in the whole Green Bush area to have some type of public parking.
And what a good one to have.
Yeah.
Right, right, yeah.
This may change in the future based on, like Karen says, the master plan for the Green Bush area. This, this may be removed in the future, or, I know they looked at a couple of different options for this whole area. There's a lot of interest in the properties in the area too, so this is something to try to accommodate and keep people safe in the immediate.
Hey Sean, so, we're just looking at the map here, and by keeping the parking on that side of the street.
That would be the no parking side.
No, no, on the, on the brewery side of the street.
Yeah.
They park all the way back where the curve comes, and it really, people making the turn on that road, it's very dangerous if they, if they park all the way to the end of Chick Fagan's house there. Yeah, they can't go back to Stockbridge, I mean, it's almost better, although John wouldn't like this, if you put it on the other side of the street, because it limits, that they can't get back into that driving area. And I'm not suggesting to put it there, but I think we do have to paint spaces, and we do have to say where that, that area can stop, because people try and wedge a car in there, and all of a sudden you're in the driving lane. At night, it's dark, and that's a very dangerous curve, I think, I think you'd all agree. So I think you do have to go back there and find out where that end line is gonna be, and you have to paint something there and make sure that people don't exceed that going back into the road.
Right, we could add that, no parking beyond.
That point, yeah, put a sign there.
Corner, or, so that they are restricted to, in the area.
Yeah, sometimes I think signs get, get overlooked, but if you painted those lines in the, on the cement, then maybe that would be less, like, I don't know, what do you guys think?
No, I agree, were you planning on doing that?
I don't think at this point it was just to limit the parking on both sides, so that an emergency vehicle could get through. Right now, that's all, if you'd like them painted, I certainly could either.
I would, I would suggest that they, that, I like the idea of them one way, but go back to Traffic Rules and regs and see which they think is the best way to make sure that that's a limited, you know, sight zone, whether it's a sign or.
It reminds me a lot of like in front of Mountain One Bank, you know?
Yes.
Parallel, but you can't go, you're, you're tempted to go back near the corner, but there's a sign there that says you cannot, so.
And it gives them, I think the police enforcement now, right now, they, there isn't there a leg for them to stand on to tell people, other than to go in and, you can't park that close to the intersection and, and things like that. I think it'll help them with enforcement, but certainly, and discuss Stripe and.
That'd be great, thanks.
Anne Burbine, Ken Chrisro, I think one of the things that needs to be looked at here is making Old Country Way one-way. So that if you come off Stockbridge and you take a right onto Old Country Way, that's it. You can't come the other way. That is a very, very difficult intersection between Stockbridge, Country Way, you've got Kevin Nurse's home across the way, and it's tough, it's just a hard intersection with the turning, with obstructions. So if people went one-way down to Union Street, I think it might have, was parking on one side would resolve much of this issue.
It's not a bad idea, have the committee discussed that?
We did, we did look at that, and you end up with a bad sight distance when you try to pull out from Country Way, from Union. We'd have to do something with that intersection.
I mean, Anne has a good point, that coming the other way out of there, it's tough, it's tough looking back down Country Way, so.
And the Planning Board did talk about that as well, and discussed it in depth one evening, and decided that the temper, the no parking signs on one side would be the first step. The applicant is supposed to be coming in very shortly with a temporary solution. So with those, let's look at those first, and then see if we need to do any additional measures for the public health, safety, and welfare.
I think, to Anne's point, though, these, these are problems with or without the brewery there, so. But I, I agree, you guys are professionals, you know, I look forward to seeing when you come back with.
Hopefully the master plan can address some of those issues in the whole future development of what's going to happen in Green Bush as well, because Green Bush isn't likely gonna stay exactly the way it is right now.
Any other discussion, questions? Motion?
Move that the board of selectmen vote to adopt a no parking zone on the northerly side of Old Country Way, from Country Way to Union Street, and update the traffic schedule of the town of Situate.
Move by Ms. Canfield, second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you guys, thanks.
Thank you.
Let's hope that resolves it a little bit.
Karen, can you tell John to come in?
Is John still here? I know, he's so mean. He cones me on Sunday. I park there anyway. Okay. Paper time.
All right, so we're gonna now move on to the interviews, folks. So we are gonna be looking at Board of Health, Commission on Disabilities, Mass, Board of Advisory, Movement and Advisory, Recreation Commission, Zone Board of Appeals, Situate Beach Commission, Coastal Advisory Commission, Economic Development Commission, and more. To start off, if I could, I was gonna ask if I could see Sarah, is it Weaver? Could you just come on up? You're looking to get on the Recreation Commission?
Yes.
And I understand that you're here, so if I could. Just for Sarah's information, if you turn to the Recreation Commission, which happens to be having twenty, and I just allow my board to get to.
Take your time, yeah.
Just so you know, this is a big Bible that we have, that Lorraine and her staff put through every year. So, as you see us fumbling up here, it's because there's a lot of information.
In fact, thank you, because I spoke with Lorraine last night, and she was kind enough to move me up first because I have to go grab my daughter's kids and bring them back to the joint, so thanks.
You're right, so, you want to be on the Recreation Commission?
I do.
Why exactly are you interested in the Recreation Commission?
Okay, so I've lived in Situate for twenty-six years, I think, twenty-five, twenty-six years now. I am a lifelong, includes sports and recreation enthusiast. My kids all grew up, our kids, all grew up in Situate, attended all the elementary schools, the high schools, did all of the programs, including Mr. C's soccer and the sailing programs. I am currently a major pickleball player. I love the adult programs that they've started having, more and more adult programs. I think they could do even more in the adult area, from twenty-four to fifty age. The kids' programs are extraordinary, the golf programs, the junior golf, I think they should have some junior tennis programs, but that's another thing. I spend all of my free time playing different sorts of sports and doing different sort of things. My son, one of my twins who grew up in Situate, learned how to sail here and just bought his first sailboat, which he's kind of living on before he gets married this summer, in the ball. And I'm really passionate about the town and about bringing sports and recreation and, and making it a journey sort of from age, I don't know, infant or a little older, to a hundred and ten. I'm really passionate about sports and recreation.
Good, and it's a, it's a great commission, our board, to be on, and I can tell you that. There's a lot happening right now in the town with regards to it.
I know, I hear a lot of stuff going on with different fields.
It is, it's been going on for a while, but I think we're at a point, we're at a juncture where things are happening, they're gonna happen shortly, so it's a, it's a great time to be involved.
Yeah.
Questions from my board?
Nope, I'm just, you know, happy to point out all the great experience that you have, your social service skills and whatnot, so that'd be a nice attribute to, to the Recreation Commission. And my, what I'm really looking for too, are folks on these committees to really help initiatives move forward?
Yes.
And, and, what?
I'm just listening, I'm mesmerized.
It's nice to be mesmerized.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
Just to help some of the initiatives move forward, especially with all the fields that we're evaluating, because sometimes things kind of get stuck, and it's nice to have, Recreation Department does so much with.
They're, they are extraordinary.
Not a lot of resources, so having a strong Recreation Commission to help them do some of the lifting is really helpful.
Absolutely, yeah, the Recreation, just, I mean, I work closely with more with, with the pickleball. Getting pickleball introduced to Situate was amazing, because I was playing in Marshfield, and there were a bunch of people, we're playing with the seniors, or, or, you know, whatever. There's so much potential for so many different types of recreation in this town, for truly, for life, you know, for lifelong recreation and sports, it's, it's amazing, it's a great department, it's a great town. It's cool, it is, yeah.
Other questions?
I have to say, I don't think having social worker and.
Oh, I met you right before you were elected, and we talked about pickleball down in Marshfield.
That's right, well, hi. I, I think having, having social work and, and, and group therapy experience would be excellent for committee work.
I'd like to just thank her for willing to step up and.
Yes.
Be so enthusiastic.
Oh, I am, I, I, I'm a true believer in fun and sports and recreation, so game on.
So what we have is, we're not gonna be voting on Rec tonight, much as Lorraine doesn't want to hear it, because I think we have other interviewees.
Yep.
Who may not be here tonight, so what I will say is this, we're gonna be voting on some people, but I'm not sure with Rec, we might have any volunteers, so, but I will say that next time we have a voting rule, we'll be voting on it.
All right.
Can I just, so, just tell me a little about your time commitments and what, what availability you have? So, just tell me a little about your time commitments and what, what availability you have, um...
Well, I'm more, I mean, I work, I do work full-time. I work at a psychiatric hospital full-time, but I'm a supervisor, and I am able to leave by three in the afternoon. I'm always free on weekends.
Right.
Um, my son, it was really funny, I was just listening to the Untold stuff, he works at Untold. Really lifelong Situate. Um, so I have a lot of time, free time, on the weekends for commitments and also in the evenings.
Good. Yeah, so Jennifer, what, meet twice a month or something?
Once a month.
Month to month?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, usually.
She has flags.
Yeah, usually seven, seven thirty at night. I also work full-time, so.
Yeah. I mean, I'm out of work at three thirty or four.
Um, and the one thing I do like about, um, about you in this position is I think that we need a diverse group of people with different, you know, avenues to different areas, like people that have little kids, understand the program, is it going on with a five or six-year-old, people that are dealing with pickleball groups, understand those needs, and I think, uh, the more...
Well, and also, I think the group of the in-between people, the, you know, the twenty-four to fifty-year-olds who, you know, are doing some of the great programs that they're offering right now, and I think there are even more programs that could come out of those. You know, I mean, you know, playing recreational soccer when you're thirty is pretty cool, but you have to go to another town, you know, just doing stuff like that, flag football, just, there's a bunch of stuff, I think, that's really available.
Have you been to any of the meetings?
No.
Have you talked to Maura Glancy at all?
Oh, I know Maura very well. I work with her very, very closely, getting pickleball going up in Situate, up and running. So I see her, um, two or three times a week, and...
Great.
My full disclosure, my daughter does work for Maura as the field coordinator.
Oh, actually, I saw her this weekend.
Yes.
Um, yeah. At the galley down, on the first Friday.
Oh, yeah, of course, at the galley.
Great, that's all I have.
Or the brewer.
Where else have you been besides the galley? Tell all, please.
So I would love to do it, if it's, if it's an opportunity that you think I would be suited for, I think it'd be a great fit.
So what we have right now is we have two openings, and there are, it appears to be there are four applicants, um, one of which is, it's not his primary choice, so we'll have to see and talk to him and find out. That's the reason why I'm interviewing now. We will make a decision. Um, I would suggest to the board the next meeting, if that's acceptable to the board, so we can contemplate and, um, and open that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right.
You're gonna stay on the Recreation Commission, so we can, um, move over to David Mahary. David, if you don't mind coming up. Good evening, Dave.
Good evening.
Now, Dave, I know you, Dave happens to be a neighbor of mine, so, um, I'm gonna turn the question over to my board members, 'cause I know Dave.
Well, the first question is, hi.
Hi.
Is, uh, why, why are you interested in being Rec?
Well, I mean, I, you know, looking at my, my history.
Mm-hmm.
I've worked for two different Recreation Departments, something that I believe in, that a town should have as a viable option for its community. Uh, you know, you should have programming for kids, for young adults, for, for seniors, and, and, you know, I see a lot of the, um, potential that could be, that could go on, especially with the new Gates or the old Gates gym, you know, making that into a full Rec center, fully viable Rec center, but then also, you know, the fields need to be pushed through. That's something that really needs to be done, and, um, I have experience with that, too, when I was, uh, interning in college. Um, the Rec Department I worked for, we were in a ten-year program of building a, uh, a recreational park, where we had five, um, five softball fields, concession stands, soccer fields. So, uh, you know, we had the land for it, but I understand the, uh, the, the part about grants, you know, getting grants and going through all that, all that stuff, going through contract bids and things of that nature. Uh, so I feel like my expertise in that area would help, would be beneficial to the, to the, to it as well. Um, you know, I have young kids, a ten-year-old and an eight-year-old. I actually, I, um, uh, went to, uh, GN at the time in Maura about creating a program for youth basketball, for kindergartens and first graders, called Little Shooters. So it's now in, it'll be in its fourth year. Um, the first year we had ninety-something kids, last year we had over a hundred and thirty kids in the program, so it just continues to grow and grow. Uh, I like to think of it as the, the Mr. C's of basketball. So, uh, I mean, just from my personal experience and love of sports and recreation, I feel like I'd be a perfect fit for the, for the commission.
Have, have, have you had a chance to look at the field study that was conducted?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dave, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Ladies first.
You have phenomenal experience, so, when I was looking through your resume, so I don't have a ton of questions, 'cause I can't imagine that you're not qualified to do this, looking at all your experience. Um, yeah, just so folks know, you know, assistant head coach for men's basketball, um, director of Everett Recreation Center. I mean, a lot of, lot of great experience, and thank you for that basketball program. That sounds awesome.
Yeah, well, it's, I, selfishly, I did it 'cause my son needed a place to play, but, you know.
That's how I love to begin, don't get started.
Right, so.
Mr. C's been at it for forty years, you're in trouble.
Right.
So, Dave, have you been to any of the meetings, have you, you know, you got the time to do the same type of, you know, there is a time commitment and there's commitment outside of this to be involved in different projects that go on, like the field, uh, committee that, or the field committee that we put together?
Right.
All that, right up your...
Yes, yeah, no, and, and, um, you know, I understand the time commitment and this one, I work from home, so, you know, there are things that I can do during the day, if need be. Uh, so I've, my schedule's pretty flexible, as it is. Um, and, and I have, I went to the most, not the most, but maybe two meetings ago, when it was before the town vote, we were talking about, uh, getting the field, you know, pushed through and all that, so, uh, so, but I, I understand the commit, the time commitment and everything.
So I, I know Dave a little bit as well. Um, he's got young kids, which I, again, just like the, the previous candidate was more involved in kind of older stuff, I think we need someone there that has younger kids in the program to see their needs. Um, I know you bring a lot of energy to, um, everything you do. I've seen you be involved in programs that your kids aren't involved in, I've seen you ref basketball tournaments, I've seen you, you know, be at a lot of different events, so I think, um, you've got your thumb on the pulse of what's going on with that younger age group, and I think you have the energy that would be a resource to the, the committee as well, so. Um, and then, as Maura said, the resume speaks for itself. PCA, you know, great group there, and, uh, and all the other Rec Departments work, so. Great.
You're an Eagle Scout?
I am.
How many people know that?
Uh, not many.
That's great.
I got my Eagle before, I got my driver's license, so.
Wow.
For anything you haven't, like, that's very impressive, I'll tell ya.
Very that one. All right, so David, I'm gonna, uh, please.
Okay.
You're welcome to stay. Anybody's welcome to stay, or, um, if not, next meeting, I know you hate to hear that, but next meeting, we'll vote. We'll vote at the next meeting, I promise you.
And they don't have to come to the next.
No, you don't have to come. You can watch on TV.
David, thank you for...
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Susannah Brennan. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good. You've had the benefit of hearing some of the questions that...
I've also, I've also had the benefit of hearing some outstanding candidates, which is wonderful.
Don't sell yourself short, Eve. So, as you know, what piques your interest? Why is it that you're interested in the Recreation?
So, um, let me take, take a step back. A twenty-four-year resident in Situate, raised my three boys here, have been working full-time for a very long time, um, and am now at a point in my career and at a point in my life with my boys that I have time to give back to the town, and I'd like to do so. And because I had boys, I was probably most involved with town things in recreation. So they did all the, the programs, et cetera. So it was the first thing that kind of popped to mind. Love to give some volunteer time, what makes sense for me, maybe recreation. Now, I don't have the resumes of the other two, um, haven't been as actively involved, uh, but I do bring a professional and execution quality that, that, you know, comes from being in the corporate world forever, so that might help.
Um, I also see you have a second choice, too.
I do.
And if you don't mind me asking, they're interesting.
They are.
Options, and then the, the second option is the Mass Port Authority Advisory Committee and Logan Airport Community Advisory Committee. That's, that's one of the same, but that's why Recreation and then Logan, so...
Recreation felt very close to home.
Okay.
Like, close to family, things that I know, things that I've, you know, been through with my kids. Um, Mass Port is more, I'm in Boston all the time, I, I work across from the airport. Uh, this is somewhat of an easy thing for me to do on behalf of the town, but it doesn't get me necessarily closer to town stuff. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
But you'd be doing good things, hopefully, for the town, for the air pack traffic.
Yeah. I'm happy to do either.
Or both.
Or both.
Hey, you know there's no exit door, right?
Questions from the side?
Oh, thank you so much for coming forth. I mean, you do have a different perspective than some of the applicants, and that's interesting. Um, and, but there aren't a lot of people raising their hand for Mass Port, so.
I figured.
Her hand's only halfway up.
I know.
Maura?
No, no.
Maura?
We're having this issue tonight.
Well, my name's Tony.
Could you separate that?
I'm Tony.
No, go ahead.
I've known Suzanne for years, so I can't think of a better candidate to represent us in Boston or, um, here on the Recreation Commission as well. She, as she said, she is very good at executing projects and getting things done. I think she's selling herself short a little bit. Um, she was highly involved in the development of the Flannery Field, adding a nice soccer field, additional lacrosse field, I think, back then, years ago, so she spearheaded that entire project. So I don't think you should sell yourself short there. You certainly have a lot of experience with working, uh, through boards and commissions in town to get things done, which is...
Yes, I did work with the, with the Rec Commission very closely for a long period of time to get that done.
So she'd be great.
Thank you, Maura.
And in terms of working, you know, kind of at a high level, is that the time commitment a problem, getting to meetings and...
No.
No.
I'm at a point in my career at this point that I get to leave early.
I'm not quite there yet, but, um, good for you. Um, and, hey, tell me what some of the programs your kids were involved in, and when was that?
Uh, so my boys are twenty-one, nineteen, and seventeen, so they started with Mr. C's soccer, we did, uh, Little League, we did lacrosse, we did basketball, uh, we did Summer Slam, we did pretty much any boy sport you could think of in town. Um, during the winter in Gates, what were those programs, besides basketball, there was dodgeball?
Hockey, yeah.
Hockey, uh, air, yeah, right, right, floor hockey.
So is there any initiative that you see as something that you're looking to impact?
From Recreation Committee? Um, I think the Fields is actually a, a really big one. I have a, a number of friends who have very small kids, as well as I've actually really eagerly looked at all of these adult programs that are coming through. But I do think that Fields is still an issue in town, um, the upkeep of them and, and kind of where they go, and so that was one that, that stuck out for me, particularly since I had done the Flannery Field.
Great. Thank you.
Good. Anybody else? Well, thank you very much for coming. I, I wanna thank everybody for coming. It's an important interview, we wanna meet people. You know, it's kind of, there's some times where it can be very discouraging, or it can be very tough or heated. This is a great opportunity to meet people. It's one of the functions that we have as a board to appoint, to help committees and boards that actually you're helping your own town, because we can't do it, uh, because of so many other reasons, but we, it's a great opportunity to meet people, so thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm gonna actually go back to the very top of our list, which, um, would be the Board of Health. So I'm looking for, is it Wendy? Alex, I'm sorry. Alexia, thank you, all right. I apologize, Alexia.
Let me stop.
Oh, and the tab number for my board would be tab number five. So, good evening. And just so that you understand, there's one opening, um, there's a renewal, which we gotta take a look at, and then, um, and then, of course, um, there are two, two applicants that are looking, so any of that. We're not gonna be voting tonight, because the other applicant is not gonna be here until the next meeting, but, um, just to let you know, we'll interview you, we'll interview that person, and then, uh, make a vote on it, but, um, so, why is it that you're interested in the Board of Health? A very important board, I might add, for many reasons.
Yeah, I spend a great deal of time there, as it is, um, through, I work fully in real estate, so, um, every time I have a new listing, I have to go down and, you know, see if it's a septic system, look at the plans, so I can correctly, um, tell the potential buyers where they are. And I used to be a regi, well, I am a registered nurse, I still have my license. Um, I worked in intensive care at Mass General, and being in that office, I've learned a lot about the, what the town nurse does, and I feel like, um, you know, I could contribute a lot to that role as well. I'm in a lot of homes, I know they do, um, hor, cases of hoarding and things like that, I've seen them myself. And, um, you know, I can help with vaccinations, I was also a visiting nurse, um, I was on the Optimal Care Committee at Mass General. Um, so, you know, I kind of, I'm in people's homes, I hear about their health problems, I see things, you know, I could help, you know, bring to, to the town nurse and to the attention.
Have you been to any of the meetings so far, or seen them on TVs?
I haven't, but I read all the notes from two thousand and seventeen, so.
All the, the, um...
Minutes.
Minutes, probably.
No, yeah, you know, the trash compactor and everything else, so unfamiliar with.
That's pretty good. I don't think anybody's ever sat there before, watched it, that's a, um, that's, that's a lot of... Or have they survived it before? Yeah, well, that's the other thing, is sometimes they can be very dry.
I printed them all out, read them, so.
Sean?
Well, just gonna ask Wendy what Tony has asked in the past, because this board meets like once a week, every, once every two weeks, quite a bit, and do you have the time for that? And the reason I ask, it's a three-member board, so, you know, two have to be there to have...
I do. My kids are eighteen and twenty-one, they no longer require my attention, so they like that I'm...
Too lucky.
It's a little sad, but, um, you know, I'm looking to, uh, you know, fill my free time, so, um, you know.
What you just said hit the nail right on the head, you know, hoarding, the vaccinations, septic systems seem to take a lot. It is a little bit of a learning curve, I've learned by watching, by sitting in on the meetings, and you would, too. Thank you.
Yeah.
Step it up.
Thank you for choosing to use your free time to serve the town, that's awesome. Um, you did list other, um, should we, can we go into that? You, you did list other options that you would be interested in? Um, and I just was curious how you prioritized your interest.
Well, I know I didn't, I kinda just went along and thought I could actually help out with a lot of these, um, boards. Well, the Board of Health is kind of the perfect combination for my experience and what I'm actively involved in day-to-day. But Economic Development, um, you know, as you know, we own two businesses, um, I grew those from, you know, something that really wasn't going well to what it is today. I also, you know, started my own career in real estate, and I've done well in the past couple of years, so, you know, I, from a business perspective, I do understand marketing, budgeting, hiring, human resources issues, legal issues, um, there, there's a lot of, just a lot of committees that I, I thought were interesting.
Great. I appreciate that.
I, I did look after, I think I put down seven, so.
You, you won.
But anyways, I'm open to, you know, wherever I could help, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, is there any, any initiative that you're in, looking to impact?
Um, I don't have one, to be honest, in particular. I just, you know, think I could help with a lot of the different things.
Great. Thanks.
Now, Wendy has great, uh, experience, as she just went over, and I think that hits the Board of Health, but, um, I'm curious if, you know, what your level of enthusiasm would be for the other ones, you know, you have Economic Development as your second, and then third, Affordable Housing Trust, um, which is also something that is probably a good fit for you as well, with your real estate and, and your involvement in the community, but, um, just curious, hit to what level of acceptance to one of those committees you would be interested in, in the event that...
Right, those more qualified candidates, I'm fine with all of them.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't be disappointed or...
Great.
No, and thank you for coming forward.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, like any, you know, next time, we'll be voting on it, so, um, appreciate it, and, um, okay, I'm out.
You went to Syracuse, though, didn't you?
No, the UVM beat, uh...
No, I did, I wanted to tell you that, I did, and I was laughing. He's the UVM guy.
Okay, well.
Thanks for seeing.
All right, so that takes care of the Board of Health. Um, I'm actually looking for Jamie Coleman. Jamie, come on up, you're looking to get on the Commission on Disabilities, that would be tab five on my board, and, um...
John, can I just assume that those other people aren't here?
Uh, yes, the, uh, the other people are not here. Um, the next meeting, we will have, um, George Zizis, I think it is, he'll be there the next meeting. And Doug White's not here, right? So, I'm sorry, Jamie.
Oh, he's a renewal, right.
Good evening. Why are you interested in the Commission on Disabilities?
Uh, my youngest daughter has Down Syndrome.
My youngest daughter has Down Syndrome and is working her way through Situate Schools now. She's 12. And is involved in courses and Special Olympics and a lot of the things that are going on in town. And, you know, with kids with special needs, you know, once you're out of the school system, you're kind of, you know, on your own. So I'm thinking ahead, in my own particular case and for other people in town as well, and what resources and things that are available for people once they're out of that intensive special needs environment that they're, that's available to them in the school system. So that's my interest.
And that's a, there's a huge gap. That's the problem. Once we have cores, which is great.
Yep.
There's a gap that goes from, I think it's 19 or 21 or 20, depending on the age.
Twenty, yeah, 22.
When they finally officially graduate. There's not an awful lot. It's something that I think is commendable, that the town and the surrounding area needs. Have you been to any of the meetings so far?
I have not, no.
Have you spoken with the Chair, Megan Sumner, at all, or?
I haven't, no. I just came across really on Facebook a few weeks ago and saw this list of available openings. And I was like, it's just easy now to find out about things in town that you probably wouldn't have found out about before. So I was like, oh, wow, this is something that that could be of interest. But it's not something I've been following or thinking about for a long time to be.
It's a very important commission. And I know, like, we are in the midst of sending out an RFP for a needs assessment for the town properties. I think it's actually at the Commission on Disabilities meeting, I think, the next meeting, which is next Wednesday, which is a really important document to go out and then get an assessment of all the town's buildings to find out, okay, what's the accessible? Who do we need to do? I think the other aspect, while it's advisory, it's, it's very instrumental in identifying, at least from the public's perspective, things that we really need to address. And sometimes they're, it's not so much they're forgotten, it's just, it's just not focused on. And they need to be focused on. Questions from my board?
None.
The, you've heard this question, is just time commitment?
Yes, I do have a fair amount of free time, especially in the evenings. I do work in Boston. But both weeknights in the evenings, I'm very available.
Okay, yeah. So time of the meeting, seven usually?
Seven or 7:30 is my recollection. It's once a month.
Once a month.
I don't, I think. I may have missed a month or two here, but I'm pretty confident they'll be meeting on a regular basis.
Yeah, that's my phone.
I will say this, Jamie, we are voting on this. So you're welcome to stay. And you're the only one, and there's an opening, so.
Or we can call you tomorrow.
Mr. Chair, do you want me to?
Do it now. Why not? Why not keep up and stay the excitement?
Then he can go home. Make a motion to appoint Jamie Coleman as a member of the Commission on Disabilities for a three-year term beginning in 2019?
Until a replacement.
Oh, yeah. Is there a special language here?
Yes, there is.
Until a replacement.
Would you like me to read it?
Strike that motion. Go ahead.
I have it in front of me. Thank you, Lorraine. Move to appoint Jamie Coleman to the Commission on Disabilities for a term of three years or until successor is named, and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Motion by Ms. Canfield.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Discussion. So one of the things for people who are being appointed, you've got 30 days to complete. Basically, it's an online, through the state, conflicts check. So you go through it, you read it, they basically educate you, and you take a little test. If you fail the test, you go back and take it again. And I'll tell you basically what you can and cannot do as a public official. And for some people who've done it before, it can go quickly. But I mean, that's the important, again, do it in 30 days.
So moved.
Motion seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Jamie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Welcome.
Can I also make a motion to reelect? Reappoint?
Yep.
Renewals.
Megan Sumner?
Yep. Move to, to reappoint Megan Sumner to the Commission on Disabilities for a term of three years or until successor is named, and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law's online training program is completed within 30 days.
Motion by Mr. Vignani.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That takes care. Lorraine, two down. Now's that. I know you're mad. All right, we're moving on to zoning board. Brian, you're here. Are you here for this, or are you here for something else, or?
I just want to reiterate my ongoing interest in being reappointed to the zoning board.
Come on up to the mic.
Come on up.
He was, he was interviewed in March.
Yep. But that's all right. I saw you here, and I'm like.
Hi, Brian.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board? Brian? It's good to be back. So the bottom line, you're interested still in the position?
Yes.
And the zoning board, I've known Brian. He was on the board when I was on the board. You're a very good candidate. And right now, there is one opening. And the only thing I'm going to ask my board is, one of the questions I have for the zoning is, they're in the middle of, or not the end, they're at the end of Haring Brook, which is a 40B. And I'm not sure if they have one more meeting or two. I don't know, Brian, you know, but I need to know because the official voting member is the one who's coming off. So this position is going to be fill, filling that spot. And we don't want to necessarily replace that position until the vote is in. What's that?
I know a little bit about this. At the last meeting, they voted to extend the time for completing the decision. They have a hearing this Thursday night. I believe the consensus is that that will likely be the last hearing.
Okay.
And then there will be a vote, and then the decision will need to be written. But that, that will likely be the last hearing on that.
So once that's in, and I think, what I would propose my board is that we don't vote officially on the position until the next meeting, which is in two weeks. So that way, if this is the official last meeting, the vote goes in, and then the decision will be written by special counsel. And then at that point, we'll be back. I don't know if the decision's going to be written. I don't know the timing. But at least that position vote would count, I don't know what's. And so then in two weeks, we'd be voting on the position.
That's, that's, you know, at your pleasure. I would submit that you could vote to fill the vacancy as of July 1st, which would be at the end of, it's Sarah Trezis who would be getting off the board, and that would fill her position in time for the, for the July hearing without having to readdress it.
July hearing, they're.
The July, they meet on the third Thursday of the month?
Right. We're going to be meeting on the 19th, just in two weeks.
Okay.
So that's what I'm saying. I think what we can do is, I just want to make sure that she's voted and that decision's made. And then once that's done, the position's filled.
If, if you're meeting again on the 19th, that may even be in time for the June ZBA hearing.
Yeah, the following.
I don't know what the third Thursday of June is.
Might be the 21st, maybe. Anyway. So anyway, questions from the board?
Nope. I remember your interview from before. You're very qualified.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I have a question. There's some questions.
No, I, I just support Brian. I think he's, he did a great job before. I think you'd do a great job again. You know what's going on. You're, you're well spoken, and you get the topic. So I think you do a great job.
And just, I've been to every meeting essentially for the past six or so months.
You've read the minutes?
Well, I've, I've been at the hearings. I really, I've not read the minutes, but I've been at the hearings. And this, this, the board certainly has their hands full with this Haring Brook Meadow hearing. And I'm looking forward to Thursday night's hearing, so.
Some of our board members might be in attendance, and it should be interesting. Good. So we'll be, we'll be, come to our meeting on Tuesday, the 19th, or watch us on TV, all right?
Thanks. No, I'll be here. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Is Nancy hurting?
She said, she said this email that's not going to.
Oh, yeah, she can. Okay.
Oh, that's right.
All right.
Another reason.
So that completes the zoning board for now. We're going to move over to the Situate Beach Commission. Is Meredith Knowles here?
Her flight was delayed.
Well, that's right. Gee, you wrote that down right in front of me. I might even read it. All right. So Meredith, moving along, Mary Jo McNally. All right. So that takes care of the Beach Commission.
You know what? They could be at the Beach Commission because they're meeting right now.
All right. Well, you know what? Jonathan Grant for the Coastal Advisory? Jonathan, come on up. That's tab 30 for my board.
I don't think I actually added a resume. I think I just sort of wrote down a couple of.
I'll tell you what. So why don't you tell us, one, your interest in Coastal Advisory Commission, and then a little bit about your background. How about that?
So the, essentially, the coastline and the waterways of Situate are why I moved here originally, and why I'm still here. So I've got two kids. I've got one in ninth grade, one in seventh grade. So a lot of the time that I spend sort of coaching and other things are, are winding down. Just turned out of being in the advisory commission for, or committee for Stelllag and Banks. So part of my thinking was, with some of this free time, is seeing if there aren't ways that I can help the town in any way with my background. So, which sort of led to the Coastal Advisory Commission. I had a lot of talks with Rick Murray over the years. My background is as a coastal engineer. Originally, worked for a number of years in that, went back to school again, ended up in oceanography. And so what I do now is a mixture of coastal engineering, oceanography, and a lot of restoration work for the federal government on marine and coastal environments.
You sound qualified.
Yeah, there was a lot of highlighting when I read your resume.
Because there are the people who are interested. But I will say, your resume, you speak well for yourself. Questions from my board?
This is obviously a critical commission for the town with a lot of the challenges and your experience. Thank you so much for raising your hand, because I think you could bring a perspective that would be awesome. So thank you for that. I have no questions.
Um, yeah, so I, I said a few people. So is there, is there a topic that you're most interested in, or what is your, the area that you think you can make an immediate impact?
Some of what, so the coastline's got, you know, with, with seawalls, with other tools, with other things, there's sort of a short-term solution, and there's a longer-term reality and a solution that needs to go with that. So some of what I'd like to see happen more of is making sure that the short-term solutions are the best ones available and being used in the right way. Because what was a short-term solution that was effective 10, 20, 30 years ago is not always as effective today. And then I think there, there are long-term realities that Situate's going to have to face. And I think there's a lot that can be done to start, one, educating the public, so that when realities pop up, people are actually aware of what the trade-offs are. And a lot of the tools that are available, things like seawalls and other things, the economics around them to make them effective become very difficult at a certain point in the future. So with everything with infrastructure, with everything that the town is spending money on within a certain area of the coastline, there's an efficiency that can happen about making sure that, that those decisions are made, not just with an eye on what makes sense, sort of functionally and economically now, but that you're preparing for what the realities of the town's going to face 10, 20, and 30 years down the road, so.
So do you like seawalls?
I don't, I've pushed for seawalls hard in certain circumstances and in the right context. I think they're a great tool. I think they're, they're a short-term tool, but I think they're very effective. There are other times and other contexts where seawalls do a lot more harm to an environment and to a shoreline. And if they're not done right or amended over time, not just kept in shape, but actually changed in how they function, there's a certain point down the road where they're actually doing more damage than they're helping. So I don't have a strong emotional attachment where they are to them. I think they're a great tool when they're done right.
What about wads?
Just wrote it down. Did you see that for me?
Oh, did you write that down?
I did. We've been asked about, we've been asked about wads. And, you know, and so that's why it's an interesting.
I guess it would be, in what context?
Putting them in the water to break down the waves?
So there are a number of, so you're not really breaking down the waves. What you're trying to do is absorb as much energy as you can and dissipate that energy before it gets far enough up. So the shoreline is always going to try and reach essentially an equilibrium profile from offshore to up into the coastal zone. And no matter what you do to it, that energy profile is always going to try and get it back to that. So wads are one of, I'd say, seven or eight different ways of dissipating that energy. I'd have to actually look at it to make sure that it's the best one for Situate. So I, I think they can be effective when done right. But again, it's, it's all within context. There's, there's a number of different options besides that.
Okay. Great.
Have you seen or reviewed the report?
Coastal Resilience Report?
Report that we've had, if I have a chance?
Uh, I, yes, but I'd have to look back at it to really.
It's 175 pages.
Question, go ahead.
So my question would be, since you are a coastal engineer, and we have that very in-depth, detailed guide, you know, from another coastal engineer in the state, which the committee and the commission has been going through, and a big piece of what the commission needs to do right now is to assist us in prioritizing what the next steps are because we've done seawalls. And we're spending a lot of money on beach renourishment, engineering, and permitting. So I'd love to know how you, you will be able to independently, but respectfully, assess some of the recommendations that we've gotten from this engineer to set us, help us take the proper course to, to the exact point that you brought up earlier, which is the short-term and long-term solutions. Because these projects aren't cheap. And, you know, one of the challenges I have with the way in which the state approaches it, it's not our talent, it's what the state makes us do, is to spend, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars on permitting and engineering, and then we can't get easements from residents. So, you know, what is our next course of action after spending a million dollars on all these projects to provide some resiliency? So I'm curious on how, you don't need, not an in-depth answer, but it's more like, you know, how, you know, your personality in working in that type of a comedian environment, I guess is really what I'm trying to get.
I'm pretty good at that. That's, for, for what I do now, it's, it's, what I, it's, most of what I do as a consultant, and most of that work is sort of remote, so it's out of Situate, is dealing with, we'll go in and restore, sort of assess and restore the physical and the biological damages after oil spills. So you get stuck with the local and the state, the residents, and probably five or six different federal agencies. And what we do, and what I do, is essentially marrying all that together to try and find effective solutions that hit the laws and the requirements, but deal with the local and the state and the federal politics at the same time. So I don't know if that answers your question.
No, it does. That's great. I think that's exactly some of the, the guidance, you know, I think we get stuck in inertia a little bit because there's so much information before us, and we need to fast-track this.
Yep.
And, and we need some help doing that.
Probably the last question, because we'll move on. You have conservation and waterways, obviously. Those are other areas you're interested in.
So, and probably waterways would be the next one after that. It's, again, just, it's, it's something else that I love and that drew me to Situate. It's something else that, just because of the environment that I work in and everything else I do that I know something about and have some background.
There wouldn't be any case for a conflict of interest, would there, in your profession and serving on the board?
No. So the coastal engineering work, I do not a lot of anymore. I do it from time to time. And I've, I've done work for the state of Louisiana the most recently. And I do a fair amount of work in the Caribbean on that. But as far as, I haven't done any coastal engineering work specifically in New England in decades. in decades.
Jonathan, thank you very much. Appreciate it. This is, again, we'll make a decision on the nineteenth. Appreciate it. Terry Breen? Terry, good evening.
Sincerely apologize for not doing a resume first. And second, I would concede Jonathan because he's exactly what we need on these boards. So he's an outstanding qualified candidate and I'm the exact opposite of him, so.
Well, tell us why you're not qualified.
Because I didn't study that. What I would say is a couple of things. One is executive at Fidelity, thirty-plus years. Much of my career's been about significant project management. It's my background, I've managed hundred-million-dollar projects at Fidelity. So I kind of know a lot about what has to go into getting things done. It's kind of what I love doing. I'm a geek, I guess, when it comes down to project management and really digging in and getting things accomplished. The same thing, really, honestly, we're relatively new to Situate. We've been here four years, but we lived in Cohasset for ten, went to Milton and came back. But I've always just believed in getting involved and just being a part of my town, some Cohasset. I ran the 2008 override campaign. I was on the Cohasset Education Foundation, which came after we didn't win the override campaign. I was on the capital planning committee, very involved in the basketball and baseball programs with my kids. I was on all those committees. My son was a USA swimmer. I was an official. I just kind of believe getting involved and being part of, I think I have a lot to offer from the leadership and helping figure things out. So that's kind of why I haven't attended any of the meetings. I will say, we're in our second house in Situate. We're on Edward Foster now. And so I read three years' worth of Coastal Advisory Committee documents because I wanted to understand what I was getting into, moving into Edward Foster and really just understanding what goes on there. You know, as far as the waterways versus the coastal, I, we just, I grew up in Missouri, so when I found out you could actually live in the water, when I graduated college, I've been here my whole life. We've lived in Marblehead, Cohasset, and Situate, it's just what we do. We love the environment. We love the North River. Spend time there. I'm a big boater. So for me, it just felt like that was, my kids are gone, so I'm probably not into the school, I mean, the sports and those things anymore, but really get involved in another level, which is kind of where I believe there's a lot of opportunity. I would say my compliments, someone like Jonathan, for example, on the coast will be, I'm going to be more, I am a finance guy first ten years, then I became an operations and technology person, project management. So I think I have very strong on the financial side, very strong on project management, very strong on coordinating programs and things like that. So it's kind of why I decided to jump in a little early. I probably waited, I didn't get involved in Cohasset for three or four years, and once we got settled in our houses, I started turning this and looking to see where I can help out. So it's kind of where I started.
Questions?
Don't be, I mean, we need all personalities, to your point, and all skill sets on these commissions. Not every, we don't want ten engineers. They'll all be arguing about the same thing at every meeting. So please don't sell yourself a book. I have a question, though. You put conservation as second, which is a lot different.
Waterways.
Oh, I thought it said. I'm looking at, oh, I'm sorry.
It's a new one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Terry, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Waterways, yeah.
Never mind. I take that back. I just got the wrong piece of paper. So my question.
Yeah, and I understand, much like Wendy, I understand there's a lot of qualified candidates. I mean, I'm interested in anything that's conservation, anything in the waterways. It's kind of where my passions are and really where I want to learn more and spend time having an impact. I think, to Jonathan's point, you know, we have a lot of tough decisions and a lot of things, and it's not going away. It's like old age. It doesn't get better, unfortunately. We have a lot to deal with. And, you know, I think it's, a town like Situate's significant. Cohasset is a tiny problem. You know, they're mostly granite. And the evolution of what's going on for us is pretty significant. So I'd love to be part of that.
Yeah, one little twist to this committee is there's, you have to fill certain needs to be on the committee, so you would be a coastal resident. You know, and there's seats for that specifically, inland resident, and we try and get a diverse group of people, which, maybe Jonathan, while you're still here, where do you live?
First man.
That's inland. So anyways, that's just another component of trying to figure out who fits on this committee. Have you been in any meetings?
No, I have not, not on this one. I haven't. Like I said, in looking at, we were looking for a home in First or Second Cliff, and so I spent a lot of time understanding what was going on in Coastal Advisory and a lot of that, but I haven't been to any of the meetings yet. I do, going through all your questions, I do have, I work full-time in Boston, but we are empty nesters now, so I don't have to spread my time between kid activities. So all my energies that was in kid activities is, you know, what I'm trying to deploy here. I'm always home by six-thirty-ish at night and usually work from home on Fridays. You know, we're in a digital environment now, so a lot of us work wherever we want to or need to any given time. So I'm very flexible from that perspective.
Have you had a chance to pull up the Coastal Resilience Report? It's online.
I haven't yet. No, I haven't yet. Whether I am on the committee or not, I will, though, because there's a lot for us to understand.
Exactly. It's a good data.
Sean?
No, nope. Qualified. We have one opening, though, and we'll renewals.
Yeah, one of, we do. And that's one of the things, I just, is there, one thing I was going to ask Lorraine is for some of these committee, do we have, like, attendance, like, of members who have been on a regular basis or whether or not they've missed a few? That's one thing we'll probably want to take a look at.
Yeah, committees who have designated attendance reports are included. Some have not, such as the Coastal. I can specifically, again, request it?
If you could, that's okay.
And I'll just remind everyone that you're not automatically renewed, you know. Right, so there are three, actually, there's only four residents on the committee itself, and they're all up this year as well. So it's not just one spot, there's technically four spots, which also allows us to juggle. You could be an inland resident and not, and maybe someone moves to a spot to fill another.
When we set this board up, we had specific designations for talents that we wanted to make sure, more diversify the board, as opposed to just setting up six or seven, whatever members.
Sure, sure. Makes sense.
More technical and certain.
I can tell you that Nancy Jordan was very excited when I let her peek at these people.
I am an Eagle Scout, too. I forgot that.
Hold on.
I got my along time before him.
So is the one, the spot that's open, it's other, so it's not a designated spot, if I'm reading this right? It doesn't necessarily?
It's not in there because they were the vice chair?
Yeah, it's the vice chair who's resigned.
Oh, okay.
That's the position, but anyway.
Okay, great.
We'll go through that in the next meeting. We'll make sure we have what it is. Terry, thank you very much.
I consider you a free agent. If there's other places, throw it out.
That's exactly my little asterisk here. Thank you.
Robert Murray? Thank you. Is he here? Robert? No? Okay. Well, that completes the Coastal Advisory, which means now we're going to go down to Economic Development. Is Robert R.J. Dwyer, come on up. Robert, R.J., I assume. Is that how you go by, or Robert? I'm sorry, what's that?
I prefer R.J.
R.J., okay. Good evening. That's, let me get my board to there. It's tab fifteen, please, so let me get.
The one.
Hang on one second. It happens to be one opening and one renewal. Okay. Now, let's everybody get to it. R.J., why are you? EDC.
Well, I've been a resident of Situate for most of my life, and I'm looking to get more involved in the community. And I think there is a lot of perspective and energy that I can bring to a group like that. I think that coming from the demographic that I do, just being of that age group, I think I can bring a good perspective to what that group needs to accomplish.
Have you been to the meetings?
I have been attending regularly since, I believe, January.
Okay. And what have you seen as, like, some of the issues that you see that are important, that you'd like to, I don't want to say push solely, but in order to get behind, or do you see that they're doing that you like?
I think a good focus on what pulls people to this town is something that the group needs, and I have seen a bit of them discussing expanding the brand of the town and working with that. And I think that's something that I can, you know, be a good voice on, as I feel somebody that should be drawn to that town, to this town. And so I kind of have that perspective of what draws people like that.
What kind of background do you have, R.J.?
Currently, I work primarily at Millenium Fish Market. I've also formerly worked at Oro, so I've got some background with local businesses. So I know kind of what drives them and how their business fluctuates between winter and summer and, you know, what they need to keep going. I do also have a bit of a background as a freelancer in the film industry. And that's, so that does give me a different take on things and sort of what other industries look for. If that ever becomes something that we're trying to draw, I can bring a good perspective on that. And it's also just sort of what people who are in that kind of space in their life and just that job-to-job vector are looking for in a place to reside.
Questions?
Yeah, so what, and just to kind of build on what John was saying, what topics interested you that they're working on now on the EDC?
Well, I had, what originally brought me to that group was a conversation I had with Mark Fenton, and I was discussing with him some ideas I had to, like, sort of bring sort of revitalization or bring the town forward. One of the things that kind of irked me here is the limited options in, like, internet connectivity, which I think is something that's very, is very important to the younger generation, and not to say it's not important to the older generation. And also, it also is important to somebody who's trying to start a business or wants to start, or wants to maybe do some work remotely. It's something that could drive them, if we have a more robust connection or even just more options in that, could drive people to be maybe more year-round residents, which would be a great boon to any of the businesses around here. And so he kind of led me to them and felt that a lot of my ideas would resonate well with there and could be a good voice there.
Good. Give me some other ideas that you have.
Well, one of the other things that I think that this town already offers is the fact that we have our ban on neon lights and the fact that you can actually see the sky and the stars when it's nighttime is something that not a lot of places can offer. So if we can preserve that while also moving ourselves forward and becoming a better draw in other aspects, including the fact, the Green Bush Line, so that we now have easy access to Boston, making it easier for people to commute. And so making that Green Bush area more robust in someplace where the maybe eighteen-to-twenty-five or twenty-five-to-thirty-two-year-old graphic demographic would be more interested in residing is something that can really benefit our town.
Yeah. Great.
Cameron?
No.
Your second and third choice, those in order, are you assuming Beach Commission will be second, Rec. third?
Yes. I live on Second Cliff. I've been going to Peggety Beach for my entire life. So I definitely bring that perspective of lifelong attendee, I guess it would be. And so keeping that area up to par and up to what it used to be is something that would be very important to me. As far as the Rec. department goes, I did do, like, T-ball and baseball and stuff when I was younger, but I also come more of an indoorsy kind of guy. And based on the other applicants that I saw here, that is a perspective that I can bring to the table, where it's a focus on a group that, as a member of them, I feel can be kind of left behind when there's so much focus on the fields, sports, and outdoorsy. It's still something that's good for the community, and it's good for people to be involved with. And it's also something that can be taken care of year-round, whereas if there's a foot of snow on a baseball field, there's not really much you can do with it.
Good point.
I just was wondering if you were here very early in the meeting about, did the Hockers Pedal's license on Peggety Beach parking lot? You're a resident, you go to the beach all the time. What are your thoughts on that? EDC, it's right up your alley, it seems like.
Oh, I think that it's, it's not a bad idea. Having, you know, just that convenience of food and drink being served, like, that close to the beach is something that could be a good draw to Peggety. It's, you know, people aren't going to have to leave the beach to go find something to eat. They're going to be able to, you know, figure they're going to go out, they're going to go there in the morning, they get hungry, they can go over to the parking lot, grab some good food, and then spend the rest of the day there, which is, you know, a very positive thing to have.
Any other question?
Just a comment. I think all your comments are really refreshing. And I think you have a, it sounds like you have a unique perspective that I agree with you, could be added to EDC, you know, and as well as we, you think differently, and I think that's important. So you would have my support.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. No, there is one opening, one renewal. There are two applicants. I'm going to ask the board that we just postpone this to the next meeting. Not that, you know, the other applicant is interested, so I'm not sure that's what we need to kind of take a look at our notes, but we'll make a vote on it. And, R.J., thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
And thank you for spending the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to the waterways. Paul, you're here, Paul Murphy. Come on up, Paul. How you doing?
Come on up.
That's tab twenty-four, please, my board. You're still, you still are.
Yes, I am.
I'm trying, fence viewer, right?
Fence viewer, that's correct.
So how do we go from a fence viewer to a waterway, Paul?
Well, first of all, I have a lot of interest in the waterways, as you probably know. I'm a lifelong sailor, lived in town for forty years. If I had known John Grant was going to apply for the Coastal Advisory Commission, I would have removed my name from that. But I do have a, I did put that in second because I have a personal interest in that. We had quite a bit of erosion on Second Cliff, my neighbors and I, and so we're going together to try to remediate that if we can. The waterways commission, what I see is a harbor that's still underutilized, I think, for the recreation, anyway. I'd like to see more of that if we could. I remember several years ago, we had a great, and year-round, by the way. I was thinking about the Frostbite fleet that we used to have, and it was really driven out of town for specific reasons, and it was unfortunate. I'd like to see it come back if we could use it and do it again. That'd be great. It's down in Ducksbury right now, I think.
I agree.
So that was a lot of fun to watch those guys flipping over and not getting involved necessarily, but just to watch them. I think there are a lot of things, more things that could be done with the harbor specifically to make it more accessible to the community, not only to our community, but to the whole region. I remember Maure Curran speaking about the possible use of Pier Forty-four space as an access to the harbor for the public. And I think that's a good idea. I'd like to support that, or some other place, anyway, that we could make more access to the harbor. I think about, I have a boat in the harbor. I'm a member of the Situate Boat Club. We use the launch to get back and forth to the mooring. I have a skiff, but the only place I can put the skiff is at the Situate Boat Club. There's no place else I can really do it unless I have to launch it every time I use it. So it's kind of, it's a limit. And I know the harbor's well-used now, so there's not much we could do, but there might be a few things we could do that way. So that's my thought in that. I think there are moorings that are available that haven't been assigned, and I'd like to see that move forward because I think it's a, well, it's a source of revenue for the town, among other things. Really, the harbor is beautifully done. It's well-maintained. I think it's a good, good source. It's a, it's, it's the number-one attraction in the town, really. It's the reason why most of us live here, I think. And so I think it's, just like to support that. And, um, um, so, uh, I think it's, uh, just like to support that.
I, I will say, I like the idea of trying to, um, identify other, um, access points because I know there are, from looking at various maps around the harbor, that people don't realize that there are points between lots that people don't realize because people kind of like kept their sheds or different pieces on the property. But there would be literally, it's down on access points to get into, into the harbor, which I'd love to identify in the various neighborhoods, I'm sure that, I know in Sand Hills there are at least one or two. What are your feelings about, uh, exploring, um, moorings or, um, opportunities to expand, um, boating or not boating, but, um, moorings, I guess you could say, up in the Cohasset Harbor?
Yeah, you mean along Bassing Beach, you mean, that, that area?
Yeah, which is actually,
It is. It is. I'm not, I'm, I'm not that familiar, I'd get in there once in a while. I know it is a part of Situate, but I was, um, I don't know if the, uh, if the boats that are there, are the boats there, are they, uh, is the excise tax paid to this town?
No.
No.
It's Cohasset.
Um,
I'm just only mentioning because that's one of the things that I realized, I found out that, you know, half of it, and I'm not sure if Cohasset's using it, but, um, certainly there's always an opportunity for expansion.
Well, that would be a great place to do it, there's no question. Um, I don't know what Cohasset claims there.
We can address that.
We could get a turf war going there. Anyway, I, I just think that the, uh, the harbor is the gem of the town and I just, specifically, of course, North River as well, and the access to the river is wonderful. And, um, if we can get better access to that, that would be good too. I know the spit is kind of an issue, especially from landside, uh, to get out there. Um, uh, one other thing we see, um, I would question frankly, and I probably get shot for this, but, uh, the number of, uh, police, um, uh, the, the number of police, uh, activity, uh, individuals that we have on the harbor, they seem to overwhelm us. We have, uh, we have three entities at least. We've got, uh, the Coast Guard, we have the Harbor Master who does have police authority, and then we have the Situate Police Department. And I'm not sure if that's entirely, what the reasoning is behind that, I don't really know. Uh, I think the Police Department specifically is, is just recent, um, in the past three, four, five years, that we've had a police boat. Now we have three, I think, so, um, there's, there's a lot of slips there that could be used for private, private individuals perhaps, but, um, I don't know. I, I, I don't know enough about that, I just see them arrive and I just question it.
Well, I think it's because you got Harbor Master with police powers, but they don't carry, um, shall we say, the weapons necessary. And considering that sometimes some of the boaters and, in particular, boats that are coming in, they're not necessarily the residents, um, may have, um, issues and so it's a little easier when you have a police officer going and saying, hey,
Yeah, I can understand that. They don't recognize the authority of the police.
Plus, I know, um, they've been, now, um, with certain other issues, um, they've been helpful, you know, with,
So it's effective, okay.
So, but anything.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, have you attended any of the waterways meetings?
I have.
You have? Okay, so you know what's involved when it comes to dredging and grants and permits and all of that stuff?
Yeah.
How would you better allocate moorings? You said there were vacant moorings that weren't.
Well, I think there are moorings that, uh, that haven't been assigned. Those are moorings that have been vacated and, uh, and I think that maybe, uh, the Harbor Master right now is kind of walking a little slowly through that. And, uh, so I think there's, uh, several moorings that could be, uh, could be offered.
I've attended quite a few of the waterways meetings and I think when you assign a mooring, you have to be really careful for a number of reasons that it's gonna fit, it's the right application.
Oh, I'm aware of that, yeah.
Just can't, you know, give these away. All right? That's all.
Cameron, Tony?
What do you, what do you do for work?
I sell pianos.
Oh. Great, no conflict there.
No, they, they don't float very well.
Great, thank you.
Paul, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Um, obviously, for all the members who are still here, we're not gonna be voting them on tonight, we'll vote in two weeks, but, um, appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. Lewis, appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
James Patterson. I think also known as Tucker, if I'm not mistaken. Tucker, good evening. How are you?
Good.
Good. So I know Tucker, Tucker's, uh, one of our fishing fleet, great job. Um, I can only assume you wanna get actively involved in, in that. Have you ever, have you been on this before or have you not?
Yeah, twenty years ago.
I was gonna say you worked.
Yeah, we spearheaded all the,
You really wanna go back to it, huh?
I was gonna say, why are you coming back?
Um, I'll open up to the board for questions.
Well, I'm curious why, so if he was on it twenty years ago, you've probably seen a lot of changes. Um, and I don't think we currently have, uh, commercial fisherman representation on the board, do we?
I don't think there's any, been anybody since I left.
Yeah. So what, why was, why do you want to come back?
Um, I think there needs to be a fisherman's voice on lobster man yet. You know, and questions come up at meetings and I'd be there to answer, I hope, hopefully.
Have you been to any of the meetings in the last twenty years?
Uh, on the fireboat.
Oh.
Over the Coast Guard Station.
Good. And what's your take on, on what's, what's going on there now that you would like to be involved in? What, what topic of, of concern or interest do you have?
Um, I mean, everything seems to be flowing pretty smoothly, I think. It just, uh, I think it just have, it'd be good to have a liaison on the, from the fishing fleet on board, you know?
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't disagree. I didn't know if there was a, something that was, you know, that you see going on that you think that you would have, you know, expertise in helping them with, whether it's the dredging stuff that, that Sean talked about, or, um, moorings or other revenue sources?
Yeah, when I was on before, we, um, worked with Bob Foltz and got all the dredging that was done, well, it's about fifteen years ago now. So we, that all just started, got off the ground when I left, so.
Good.
Thanks.
I, I just don't know, you keep your boat in the harbor now?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're operating out of there?
Twelve months a year.
Um, what was your opinion of the, the lifesaving, or the fireboat, whatever it's called?
Yeah, I think it's a, something we should have.
Great.
Well, my boat burned, you know, so.
Um, I was curious, I know that the Harbor Master has been interested in doing some, um, oyster farming and, and, and what your opinion of that is as far as the, uh, the health of the harbor and, and, and as a project. Have you thought about that at all?
Um,
I think that's all from Cohasset Harbor.
No, no.
Well, no,
He's talking about doing it.
Talking about it, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it, it depends, you know.
It's exploratory at this point, but as a, as somebody that is in the harbor every day.
It's supposed to be good for the environment.
Yeah. Okay.
You know, you need some, some room for certain things, you know, it's, I don't know if we have the room for certain.
Right, I think that's the question. No, I was just curious, somebody that does, makes their living out there.
Yeah, there's a lot of grant money out for,
Yeah.
sort of thing, yeah.
All right.
I already went, John, wasn't it?
Besides Franny, Keith, some of the, uh, guys that do the moorings, Ronnie, there isn't anyone that knows the harbor better than Dave or Tucker here. They could certainly assist the Harbor Master and everyone on, you know, with every square foot on the bottom of the harbor. Attending, um, over the years, a lot of the waterways meetings, there really needs to be a commercial voice. So, like Tucker said, a liaison that, that, you know, can go back and forth to talk to the commercial fishermen, to tell them what, what's going on and then bring that information back from the fishermen and where their concerns are. It's, uh, oh, I tuck in hundreds of families that, you know, either directly in fishing, lobstering, or, or related. And, you know, the numbers have gone down, so maybe all the more reason there should be a commercial fisherman or two on the, on the commission. And the commission's been asking for it as well as the Harbor Master. As far as the oysters or, you know, what, you know, the clams and so forth, but, you know, it's still in the infancy stages. It might be Bassin's Beach, it's, depends on the quality of the water. But I heard something today that maybe it could be, if something is done, maybe it would be a component of some of these guys that, they're looking for all different ways to make a living. The government regulations are restricting them in so many different ways. They have to get creative and things like that. So maybe if this, um, farming of oysters does become a reality, these guys can do it as a supplement to their income if they, when they cannot fish for different reasons. Um, so I just wanted to add, you know, sorry for going off, but I, you know, Tucker and Dave, uh, certainly know the harbor very, very well, so.
I agree. I think it's, you gotta harbor in dealing with, with boating. Uh, and I realize recreational boating's great, but we have a commercial fleet that's getting smaller and smaller and, you know, we need somebody with that voice on it. Right? There you go. We're not voting on that tonight though, Tucker. It's fine, two weeks, all right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Joseph Riley, are you here?
Yes.
Mr. Riley, come on down.
Joe, by the way.
Joe.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good, thanks.
So why are you interested?
Well, I'm a lifelong boater. In fact, I've been Cole Parkway Marina, I think this is my thirty-fifth season. I, uh, Situate resident for about forty years. March of, uh, nineteen seventy-eight, I visited Situate for the first time with my wife, shortly after the blizzard. We didn't come down to look at the blizzard, but we were out on a day trip, stood at the end of the pier and said, this is a slice of paradise here. Moved later, six months later, been here ever since. As a boater, I've come to appreciate how valuable the waterfront is, the harbor district, the waterways in Situate, the North River, Bassin's Beach, up in Cohasset, part of Situate. I've used them, my kids have grown up swimming in those waters, and I've got real affinity for the, for the area and the experience. Uh, my background is, I have a business in the harbor, an office. I do small businesses, services, accounting, taxes, business advising, strong financial background. Uh, with my clients, I do a lot of budgeting, capital planning, which I think would be a valuable contribution to the waterways and the Enterprise Fund. Uh, additionally, I've got experience, uh, as a board member and committee member. I'm a board member of a publicly-held company, chairman of the audit committee. I'm used to regulations, government regulations, dealing with the FDIC and the SEC. Uh, also on the board of a defense contractor in the local area, who, uh, does the sonar work for our military. So, got a lot of, a lot of experience in that part of the world. So, recently, uh, not recently, the last couple of years, I've had a couple of members, the board are, are my friends. I've gotten involved in some conversations with them about what the, what aways commission has been working on. I've gotten more and more interested as I've, uh, learned what the projects, the programs are. I read with quite a bit of interest the consultant's report from a year and a half ago and feel that I can contribute and would like to volunteer for that, that, one of those positions.
Good. Questions from the board?
Yeah, have you been to meetings, have you?
I have not been to a meeting. I have actively, uh, read the meeting notes and the agendas and, as I mentioned earlier, I've been staying in tune a little bit. Just actually a recent conversation with my son, uh, who's actually a firefighter in Situate. Uh, we were talking about, he's on, he's part of the dive team.
Oh.
Pat Riley, I don't know if you know who he is.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, we were talking about the waterways commission. And we both decided we had an interest in applying, we had to flip a coin to see who was gonna apply. So the old man won.
You lost?
[laughing]
So, um, is there a topic of interest to you? You know, some, some, something that's going on that the, the town's considering or?
Well, there's a lot of things going on right now. Uh, some, some project coming into conclusion. I, I wanna echo some of the support I heard from, uh, Mr. Murphy's comments earlier about how I feel as, as he does, that we don't really fully utilize the harbor area for recreational purposes and providing good access for our citizens to that area. So, so things in that area, the, uh, the, uh, what do they call, the, uh, sailing fleet, the Frostbiteers, that ones were in the harbor, for instance. Uh, they were removed from the harbor because the Harbor Master didn't provide them any place to put their boats between the races each week. Seems like a simple solution to me. Uh, one of the, a couple of years ago, I was down the dock and a transient came in with his Zodiac dinghy and tried to dock at the Cole Parkway, just to go have lunch. And the Harbor Master at the time, or one of the Harbor Masters at the time, came down and gave him a little bit of, can't park here, there's no, okay, well, where can I put my boat? I just wanna get dinners. There's, there's no place in the harbor for you to put your dinghy legally. The gentleman was a writer for a boating magazine. And it seems like a simple solution to me that we could solve that, that's, we still have that problem. There's no place, you're a boater, you come into Situate Harbor and you're dragging a dinghy, there's no place for you to do it. It's not as welcoming as it potentially could be. Just a small point, but, I'm, I'm reading with some interest in the oyster farm. There, there's some successes there down the Cape in Duxbury. Uh, you mentioned the Cohasset area. It was, I was shocked right on that little island in Cohasset Harbor, it's actually Situate, about five or six years ago. But it seems to have been, you know, policed by and serviced by the Cohasset Harbor Master. Uh, but there's probably an opportunity for us to expand our mooring. I had been a mooring holder for a number of years, as well as a slip holder. Uh, I've had two boats for a number of years when my kids were younger. Uh, they did some lobstering, by the way, which was another interesting story, my wife supported it. Uh, as Tucker probably knows, you have to kind of go out lobster traps every couple of days in order to lobster, harvest a lobster. Well, they went out once a week. So, entire time of the year, they, I think they caught two lobsters. My wife was the bank roller for this project. She figured the lobsters were ninety dollars each. Uh, I've got a couple of friends that are commercial lobstermen, so I'm a little bit familiar, not real, not, not real familiar, but a little bit familiar with what their challenges are, which are very significant.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions?
You answered most of the ones.
Yeah.
To Tony, um, great. It'd be nice to have a business owner as well, um, with some new perspective on, um, being more friendly to the transient side, agree with you, I think that we have a lot of opportunity to be more of a destination port for a lot of the folks that sail and cruise up and down the coast.
Great.
Joe, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
We'll be going with you. Uh, David Haley?
What I'm gonna try to do is get through the next interview reason, then we'll take them right back. We're gonna try to get through, I wanna try to get through the interview reason. David, good evening, how are you?
I'm not bad.
So you've had the benefit of hearing all our questions.
Yeah.
Why are you interested?
What we said.
Uh, like Tucker, I'm a year-round, full-time, commercial fisherman. Uh, I grew up in town. Um, I've got three little kids that use the harbor as well. Um, they sail through the Situate Boat Club, so I just see kind of that end of it too. I mean, there's other uses for the harbor. I mean, we tend to kind of look at our own stuff for, you know, eight, nine months of the year, and then all of a sudden, there's three months where there's people invading our harbor and then they disappear and we get it back again, but, uh, yeah. So I understand that there's definitely, there's a lot more uses to it, um, you know, albeit, you know, just for the good months. But I agree, like, um, down at the back float, down by Cole Parkway, where we tie up, um, A, there's no water down there, that needs to be dredged bad, the place is brutal. But we've got people all summer long trying to tie up skiffs there to run over to Maria's and get lunch, which is cool, you know, and a lot of times if there's not a lot of people down there, you say, all right, you know, just make it quick, you know, or don't tie up and take up half the dock if someone's coming in unload. So I understand there's definitely something that should be looked in, some type of public public tie-up somewhere. I'm not saying the back float, but someplace. I, I've always thought that was kinda, kind of a crazy deal. You're either part of a private club or you were screwed, you know, you were left to the, you know, to the launch, so. Yeah, so there's other uses and, and needs down there. Uh, obviously, I think Stephen's done a great job as a harbor master. I think he's done wonderful, you know, getting, especially the, the commercial guys was kind of a, a, a gray area deal, getting everything squared away, and I think he's done a wonderful job, very fairly, and going through the list and, and moving things along for us. He's been great. Um, and he was kinda the impetus with Tucker and I, down there, a lot of that stuff kinda tends to go by committee, everybody talks. And just the nature of our business, I mean, I know there's gonna be times during the year where it's gonna be hard to make meetings, you know, we'll be getting in late in the fall and, and I just converting my boat over now to Gilnet, and so I'm gonna be spending a different timeframe out than just day lobster. And so, last year Jared Carlberg had gone to a lot of those meetings, 'cause there was a lot of changes coming around with, with moorings and whatnot. So, it was always, it was kinda like send a representative over there and then Jared would clue everybody in, you know, over the next few days. So, I don't know if that's, you know, what we're trying to get at with Tucker and I, like, with a couple guys going, so there's always, always somebody there in the know that you can get it right from the horse's mouth. And I think that's important for us. Um, like Sean said, I mean, there's some decisions that we've seen made, I mean, there hasn't been a commercial fisherman on that board in twenty years. And there's some things that we see come down, you're like, "Oh, why did, why would they even attempt that?" Oh, you know, um, we're just a little bit of, I don't wanna say local knowledge, but, you know, literally, I mean, two hundred days a year, I'm in and out of there. So, it's like stuff that you see all the time and it's, it's, yeah, we should have a voice there, I think. Um, you know, whether it's two of us or some sort of teamwork there, but some way to get that voice and all those guys from, and I say down back, but even the town pier too. I, I've worked with Frank Maracci for years too, um, so I see what goes on on the town pier, you know, and I, it scares the hell out of us, you know, I mean, I know there's eyes looking at that saying, "Jeez, it'd be nice to put a finger pier there and a ton of tuna boats or something," you know? So, that kinda, that fleet, I started fishing in nineteen eighty-seven, I've seen that fleet go up to fifteen boats, and I see it now down to four boats on the fish pier. So, it's, yeah, and it's sad and it's, you know, and it's coming from every direction. The government's trying to shut us down, new money's trying to build a condo on the fish pier, you know, it's, we have to protect what we have there and it's just, it's coming from every direction. Um, so I think it's important to have a couple of commercial guys there, because it does bring people to the town too.
Absolutely.
You know, I think people wanna check it out. That's the reason why, with all due respect to boaters, I think a little harbor and sound, wanna see yachts or boaters, you know, being on our fishing board.
Yeah.
I from Vermont, you know, and like, you know, it's, it's nice to see the harbor and, you know, commercial fleet.
Yeah.
All dogfish. But, um, questions from the board?
No, as Mara said, I think that you're right, it's time to have a, uh, somebody that works in the harbor, uh, have a voice on this board. So, thank you so much for stepping up.
No problem.
I just have a question, um, you know, you mentioned out in the fall and whatnot, a lot, a lot of the work gets done there as well. There is also an associate position open, which I believe is a non-boating position, right? On there, on the waterways, Fran, right? So, just, is that, is there a lot of great candidates? Um, I'm just, I should've thrown it out for the other interviewees as well, 'cause I was just looking at this. Is that something that would be of interest as well?
For me, yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think just having someone there to chirp in from time to time, um, I mean, I, I, to be honest, I've never been to a meeting, so I don't know, even know how they work. But I think just kinda, you know, having that voice there that says, you know, that this isn't gonna work, or this is gonna work, or, "Yeah, we need to get that mud out of the back harbor because it's, it's about silted up." So, yeah, that, that would be, that would work for me, for sure. Just to have a voice there in the.
I, I think maybe, um, you know, obviously it's an open meeting, anyone can go, but someone with your expertise would obviously be listened to, you know, pretty, pretty candidly there. Um, maybe that we need some better communication so that the fishermen know when a topic is coming up that is really, like, you may not be as interested going and hearing about rates on recreational moorings.
Sure.
But you may be very interested in the dredging project, and maybe if, if there's some sort of back and forth that says, "Okay, here's a meeting where really some commercial fishermen should be there," that may be part of the, the task at hand too.
Yeah, that's, um, you know, but there, like I said, there's, I mean, there's other, there's other uses to that harbor beyond what we do, like, you know, like that public dinghy tie-up or something like that. Um, but, yeah, I, I mean, I don't know what a voting member means, you know, as far as, you know, you.
You have to say.
Well, yeah, as opposed to just, you know, that's the fishermen chirping in the corner. I mean, we've been put in the corner for the last, I've grown up with it, I've been to more groundfish meetings and, and you think, "This is slow, dry groundfish meeting." And you get pushed in the corner and you listen to a bunch of scientists and stuff like that, that, you know, if it wasn't in their textbook, they don't, they don't care. So, yeah, I've been pushed in the corner enough too, so that's not, you know, that's not what we're really looking for.
And that's not what I was interested in.
No, 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 but, but I, I do understand, I mean.
Yanni.
You know what?
The bottom line is, is that there definitely, there should be a say from the commercial fleet.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's missing, and I, I totally agree, I think the board says it, I know Sean's, I'm saying it too. So, it was definitely, it's a, Sean?
I was just gonna say, the meet once a month, Dave, so it's, you know, when it happens, you know, it's, you know.
Right. Well, I mean, Stephen's, Stephen's been great about, you know, kinda keeping us up to date. "Hey, look at, this is going on, you guys gotta, you guys gotta get over there and, before you get steamrolled." So, um, you know, that's been good, but it's just, literally, it's just having a voice there that can spread the word to everybody else, and then they tell this guy, "Oh, like a delegate, more or less, from, you know, that community." And, and the big boats talk to the little boats and everybody in between, so it's, if you keep somebody in the know that's able to articulate that to both crowds, then that's, you know, I think that's, that's what we need.
Any other questions? Alright, um, David, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks for staying up late.
Finally, uh, Daniel Sullivan?
All of us.
Come on down.
Last, but not least.
Youngest of five, I'm used to being last.
Franny, I see you over there. Were you expecting to talk to us, or were you just here for the meeting?
I was just following.
I just figured as much, I just wanted to make sure, I wanna bash over.
We should've asked you to ask questions.
When do I get to speak to the board? Daniel?
How you doing?
I'm good, good. Sorry it's gotten so late here, but.
No problem.
My apologies, you've been waiting and sadly you're on the, towards the end of the list, so I, my apologies. Um, why are you interested? What's, uh?
Um, I moved here twenty-four years ago from Thompson Island in Boston Harbor, and basically I fell in love with the harbor, same reason you did, for the commercial side. So, I've kinda, the wind's been taken out of my sail with Dave and Tucker, who I know very well, because if you would appoint me before any of these two, it'd be a major mistake, because I think it's one of the things that needs to be preserved in the town, is the commercial side. I disagree with Paul and some of the other people about access, we need more access. I don't know if these people have been in the harbor on a July and Saturday and see what the zoo is, it's like a scene from Jaws with all the boats. But I see the commercial side dwindling, you know, and I think, you know, having sat here and listened, that I know on some of the other committees, you've actually slotted a specific, uh, position.
Yes.
Why not do one for commercial?
I couldn't agree more.
Really good idea.
And that's why I'm glad to see people from the commercial fleet interested in doing it, um, 'cause since I've been on there, I've seen, and I think sometimes committee, we're, we're, we're subject to the applicants.
Applicants.
And if, and if the applicants are heavy or weighted towards one side.
Right.
That's what we draw from and, and our, our hope is not to, you know, focus on what, sometimes we're stuck with what, not stuck, that's a poor word, but we're, we're only able to do, we're able to accomplish that which is the sum of our parts.
No, I understand, like the coastal advisory, you have a slot specifically for people living near the water, so this makes more sense than anything. So, um, I've kinda changed my tune since I walked in the door and saw Tucker, I said, "Oh, jeez, hopefully he's not here for that." But these guys need to be on that, that commission, so.
Well, why are you interested in being on?
I'm in, I spend my.
Tucker and David are, are on or not, or whatever.
Right.
Why, why, why do you wanna be on?
You have my resume right. So, I spent my life on the water, uh, commercial captain, running high-speed ferries everywhere from the Cape to Boston Harbor. But it's more the preservation of the harbor and I've utilized it for years, for twenty-four years, my whole family has, and it's time to, uh, pay my dues. And I was, uh, guilted, if not pressured by the vice chairman to put my name in as well. I want that to go on record.
We like that too.
Dan, how you doing?
Good.
Been years. Um, great background, clearly in the, in the maritime industry for twenty years, plus years, in a lot of different things. No conflict of interest though, I don't believe in terms of functioning on, on the harbor. Any topic of interest that you really think is, is there something going on in the harbor or something you'd like to see change or something you'd like to, to impact, um, that's drawing you to this, this position?
No, and my original thought was the commercial side before, you know, uh, this happened, but I think it needs to be preserved. I think that's part of the fabric of the town, fabric of the harbor, is if you take that away, it's, it's gone, you know, and it's not gonna feel the same. So, that would be, that would be number one. Everything else, I think, seems to be going well. I think the access is good, I'm part of the boat club, but I do see that, you know, it, it gets a little crazy during the summer, and I'm not sure we need to have more people piled into the harbor, so I know that goes against the, the last couple of guys, but.
I said access only because, like, they're for neighborhoods, in other words, I'm not talking about major ones, but year-round, like, if, if we have our ownership of property town, people in the neighborhood should know, you can get down to the beach without somebody saying, "You're on my property, get off," and I'm like, "That's what I'm saying by access." Um, you know, I'm, I'm not a boater, I get sick. Stand on the terra firma, good for jump, but outside of that, that's it. Other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one more.
Sean?
How long you been in situat, Dan?
Twenty-four years.
Do you remember the commuter boat that ran out of situat?
Yes.
Were you a captain?
No, not at that, not at that operation. I was working for Mike the Girl's operation, Harbor Express, back around.
Okay, no, I see that, and I think you sold yourself, uh, quite a bit short, actually, like someone had just mentioned, but no, what I.
That would be interesting to kinda, you know, take another look at it.
Right, especially seasonal, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot different situat to Boston than here in Boston, that's for sure. So, but maybe on a seasonal basis.
Yeah, it's always been an issue with the weather and sea conditions, but there's a vessel for every sea condition in most, you know, in most cases, I mean.
Right, yeah. No, I just wanted to ask, 'cause I saw all these boats you, you've run, and, uh, I recognize a lot of the names, so I just was wondering if you were part of that program with Dave Glancy.
No, I remember that, yeah, they did that, the test runs.
I saw it, I was curious, I was gonna say, could we do it?
What year was that?
Yeah, it was a condition.
I forget. Tucker, do you remember when Dave Glancy ran that commuter boat?
It was in the nineties, was it?
It was twenty-one.
Yeah, yeah. It was, it was a condition, it was conditions thing, so you couldn't run it enough of the year to make it profitable, I think is why.
It's a tough run, you know?
Right, but certainly.
But the town has changed so much in twenty years that it could, it may be worth taking a look at again.
Are you thinking commuter into Boston or bringing, bringing people into situat?
No, you said there's enough people in situat now. Kiddingly, but no, commuters, whale watch, whatever, you know, I mean, I think he even tried the, uh, the, that, the dock boat. He tried that, didn't he? Did he? Dock boat in situat? That was all, thank you for, you know, stepping up.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
A lot of tough choices for this committee.
And I think as, as we pointed out with the other boards, having the diverse perspectives is really important and, and, you know, this board has, uh, there's a lot of great people that have come out, and I think it's a great opportunity, and I'm glad Fran's here to listen to everything too, to get his input. Great, thank you.
Daniel, thank you.
Thanks for staying so late.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
This was to see who could last the longest, right?
And just to note, on these, on this board also, there's a number of slots where people have served.
Yes.
Two, two terms or more terms, so, um, there's more slots than just the one that was resigned.
Right, there's four renewals and.
Alright, so I'm gonna ask to take a quick five-minute break and then we convene, have a drink of water for anybody or.
I'm going to, see if I can.
So, why don't we take a quick five-minute break, come back, convene, and then flesh off our agenda? Is that good?
Yeah.
Yes, we are.
Andrew wants to stay late.
We're down with this, John?
Yes, we are. Are we good?
We did cherry, other one. Good loving. I don't think we have any food.
These are not short.
I know, I'm, well, I'm feeling that much, but see, I delayed.
'Cause, 'cause, 'cause what?
She lives in Long Island.
I saw that, I, she's, I saw that, that lady.
See you, Sean, thank you.
See you later, guys.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you, Tucker.
Bye, Tucker. Yeah, no, she just needs to get across. I saw that last night.
She was meeting at the bar, she wasn't here tonight, John.
We'll get voted on these, I just, I didn't wanna go through. No, she wasn't here.
Did, no, did this?
Just a woman.
Did you sign up for this?
Uh, yes, I did.
The, the, am I in it?
You are.
Oh, okay, you didn't tell me that, so.
Well, I was just gonna tell you tonight.
Who do I need to write a check to?
Oh, I haven't signed, I haven't gotten it, this might be where it is, I, I.
Alright, and when is it? Is it Friday?
Not this Friday, it's Friday. So, Jim might be, Sean, I was gonna ask you.
What?
For the boss, I don't know, week, Friday?
Uh, do you have openings, you, would you?
Yeah.
Sure, I'll, I'll go with you. What, twelve o'clock's time?
It's eight-thirty.
Ooh.
It's an early one, I think, and then it's lunch.
Oh, it's early?
Yeah, it's like eight-thirty.
I'll just take.
Our horses are being fit, like, boss. And all the others.
Yeah, they decided.
If I go in for three projects, I can one of them, it doesn't matter.
They have a guy, I honestly would, so what is it?
Yeah, I texted. I texted. Do you like what he's done so much?
Yeah.
He just poured a little, a little cement thing.
I didn't even know that you could do it the way he's doing it, that's.
I'm tired.
I ordered my girlfriend a burger yesterday, so I know it's all today.
I need to get some licorice. I don't have a lot of juice.
There's better stuff in my office.
No, I can't have it.
I need some cider.
I need some cider.
There's a couple of openers.
I took it out of the cash.
Just let it go.
I didn't know, I didn't know.
That's one of them.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I don't drink that, I'm.
Somebody's paying.
What?
I'm gonna have one, you want one? I don't trick that up. Somebody's not too careful.
What?
Under that one, you want? Take that one.
We're going to take your lunch, will we?
That's all, I think that one.
Oh.
I'm involved with, like, that's great, great problem. Was that the thunder? Oh, yeah, I told it. Want some liquor?
No, I'd like some Advil.
Yeah, how's it, ant problem, sorry.
Good Advil.
I might have Advil. I don't have water, though.
I have Advil, I'll leave it excepted, what would you like? Any alcohol, tell us, I'm ready to go.
Bacchanic? No.
Let me see if Mora has some.
In the first aid kit, in case any of those touch your edge.
You're the best.
I know, it's my other baggie. Get it from, uh, Nats.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Put some in, guys.
How many other people are running for state representative?
Three, four.
Two are running for the Democratic primary, one Republican, one Independent.
Was it your neck? Wait, because you fell, too, right? Did you hurt yourself again?
Again?
Didn't you say you fell? Why couldn't you walk?
Well, the only, the only contestant in the primary is the Democratic.
Oh, thank you very much, here.
So you might have luck doing that, and then you could do another one when there, you have the final ballot, maybe?
Wait, is there a-
So in September, there's the primary.
Very much.
And, so you can either vote Democrat, Republican, or Independent, only, for one of, one of those races. And the only contest in those races right now, I believe, might be Republican, I think not, is just Democrat. And so then whoever wins the primary will go on the ballot in November for the final election, in each party. So, right now, there's two candidates for the Democratic primary only.
Okay, we are now back on, full business. The item we have is to discuss vote opioid litigation vote. This was postponed from prior meeting because I was not present, and I thank you for doing that. The information is actually a handout that should have been, that was provided to you on the desk here, so are there any further questions? Because I don't, I've looked over it, I think we should get involved with them, join in with this litigation, and whatever happens, happens, but at least, I think it makes sense.
No downside, do you want?
Yeah, there's no downside, yeah.
No downside. And, you know, if there's some success in this kind of quasi-class action, so be it, if not, at least we're throwing our hat in with a lot of people who are going after different pharmaceutical manufacturers who have been involved in, shall we say, this epidemic, to what degree, courts will determine, but nonetheless, it's a good thing. Motion, please.
Move that the town of Situate join Massachusetts opioid litigation attorneys, litigation with a contingency fee agreement aimed at recovering monetary damages from the pharmaceutical manufacturers and distributors for their role in the devastating opioid epidemic.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Moving on, we did the new business, so the only thing we have yet is a discussion vote of board committee and appointments. We're going to postpone any of those until the next meeting. Lorraine, we will vote those next meeting.
How about the 7:20, are we going to just postpone that, the public hearing for Hook and Harvest?
Oh, yeah, they didn't, they didn't come on. They were, that was most, I think that was just housekeeping, wasn't it, Lorraine?
Yes, the original application that we did last time did not include the transfer of stock, so the ABBCC sent it back.
Right, so it didn't change-
required us to do a new public notice and a public hearing, so nothing else has changed except they didn't check off the box.
Do we have to revote it, though, based on that?
All right, so why don't we do this?
Were they going to come in, Lorraine?
They're supposed to come in, but they're not, and I don't think they should hold their application.
All right, so I'm going to recuse myself, if we're going to, why don't, before we get to that, let's get to the discussion assigned board committee liaison positions. We will not, before we adjourn, we will deal with that last issue on the chairs. Has everybody had a chance to look at it? If not, I suppose it will be our next meeting, we go through and we identify exactly what positions we're looking for. Is that okay?
Yep.
Yeah, the only thing I would remind everyone is, I can no longer do the South Shore Coalition, so that definitely has to change.
Okay.
We're going to put her out in there.
Oh, good, okay.
I think we voted in the last meeting, I have to double check.
I think we did, too. But, okay, so we'll, Lorraine, we will vote at the next meeting all our assignments, please take a look at it, and I preferably would like to give Karen most of them, if that's okay, and see how she handles them all.
Second.
Liaison reports, other business?
You're so kind.
Any other liaison reports, anybody?
Not this week.
I don't think I have any.
I just wanted to note that the planning board issued a decision on Toll Brothers on May 17th that was written, so that's, they're complete with that work, and I thought that was important to note.
So let's move ahead. Correspondents?
All righty.
I do think there's some. I would suggest if you want to get through-
We already moved it from last week.
I know. Yeah, so here, here's the thing, I don't want us to be staying here late just to read correspondence, but I'd like to do, if that's the case, we can go through it tonight, I have no problems, but in the future, we should then make sure that our agenda is not going to be as large so that we can get through the correspondence, but tonight, I'll say, read away.
Whatever you say, Chairman. So, we received correspondence from, oh, this is interesting, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Alcohol Bureau Beverages Control Commission regarding a hearing that will be held concerning the Situate package store and a violation of underage serving, and that will be held June 19th at 10:30 at, at the ABC Commission. We received correspondence from Columbia Gas, which is not coming up on my thing, do I believe that the rates are going up, is what I read, is, does anybody have theirs up?
It's before, it needs to be approved, but, yeah.
I know. First, I apologize, it's not coming up, that they will be, can you?
Yeah, I'll say, on April 13th, Bay State Gas Company, doing business, whatever, filed a request to, for approval of a general increase in its gas distribution rates with the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities. Excuse me, on May 11th, the department documented the request as DPU 1845, issued a notice of filing, public hearings, procedural conference, and so on, but they're going through the process in order to do that. They, Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities requests that the notice be posted, made available for viewing at your offices during the normal business hours through June 19th, which we have the notice if you're interested, and they appreciate any assistance, and that's it.
All right, could I use your computer, because mine didn't? Thank you. All right, the next is from Gatra, correspondence, they request public comments by July 31st, 2018, to review fare changes that they're proposing in the fare structure. Basically, full fare will go from $1 to $1.50, and half fare from 50 cents to 75 cents, bless you. The public hearings are held throughout the Commonwealth, the closest is Wednesday, June 27th, at Plymouth Town Hall, from 4:00 to 6:30, and that information is available in the Sleckman's office if you would like to provide your comments. The Mass Housing provided us with notification, which Jim talked about at the beginning of the meeting, that we have our planning for housing production grant application requesting technical assistance to create guidelines for affordable housing, and 40 R District has been approved, and that was through the good work of our Planning and Development Office that we achieved that. I don't know what the amount was, but-
$30,000.
Yeah, what's cool about that is there were 29 municipalities that applied, and ours was one of the few that was selected in a very highly competitive round, so that's a big hat, hat tipping to our department, because they, they really did work hard on that. And then there's a letter, is, do I need to read this one, sorry?
Just the shellfish.
Yeah, so the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries sent us a letter in accordance with Chapter 130, Section 74A, that determined that below defined conditionally approved shellfish-growing areas, North River and South River, no longer meets the criteria, and the, will be closed for shellfishing at sunrise on June 1st. So I think that notice is on our website, that we are closed. And I think that's all the correspondence.
Lorraine, quick question. Have we voted the shellfish constable yet? I don't think we did.
Yes, Michael, like to me, I was like-
No, I know he is, I'm saying, have we voted on it, yes? I don't recall doing it last week.
I can double check, I think that's the, the town administrator.
I think that's what we did last week.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay, sorry.
The town administrator appoints the shellfish.
Got you, all right.
I just have a question also about the Republican election workers.
Yes.
Did, I didn't see that on the agenda.
I think both those, that's item K under board committee appointments.
Oh.
I was going to mention it, too.
Do you want to do that this week, or next week?
No, we'll do that now, as well. So what we have here is, we have annual appointment list of election workers provided by the Republican election warden, submitted by Kathy Curran. What they're seeking is a vote, a vote to appoint these election workers from a list that the Republican Town Committee provided, and there are a number of people with addresses, and so instead of reading all the numbers of people, if anybody's interested, it's down here at Town Hall, both at the Sleckman's office, as well as the Town Clerk's office, I'd accept a motion to appoint these people as-
I move to appoint the 2018, 2019 election workers from the list provided.
Second, motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Lorraine, would you please note to them, send them a note that Rosalyn Caulfield, first off, it's the wrong name, and second off, she moved to Florida?
I'm sorry.
My mother-in-law's on this list, and she doesn't live here anymore.
Okay, this comes from the Republican Town Committee.
Oh, okay, I'll tell them myself.
No, I'm, I'm happy to adjust, I mean, I don't know what I'm saying.
All right, so-
What's her name?
It's Rosalyn Canfield, but they, it's a typo on their list, it says Caulfield.
Oh, and did you say she moved to Florida?
Yep.
So she should not be on the list.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I get a motion to her, the meeting minutes of May 29th, 2018?
Second, I'm sorry, so moved.
By Mr. Harris, second by Ms. Curran.
Second.
Just hold on one second.
I don't need it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Other business, anyone?
Lorraine, I just wanted to note that Sunday, this Sunday, on June 10th, at 9:30, will be a prayer service for the firefighters memorial, at the Firefighters Memorial Stone in Lawson Common.
Sean?
This Sunday, I should have mentioned it when Robin was here, June 10th, 5:30, at his restaurant, they're showing that documentary movie again, the, the film-
Of the fish.
Dead in the Water.
Fishing industry. So I was told that you might have to, but, you know, let them know ahead of time, because it's going to be at Aura, in a counter match, and-
When is it, very?
This Sunday, the 10th, at 5:30 in the afternoon. So I will definitely be there if you guys kind of make it, but I'm sorry, I really slipped up, and I just, I remember the last one over here at the last minute, so, look forward to going and seeing what it's, I have a good idea what it's all about, but we'll talk about it maybe next week.
Okay.
All right.
Not much, just a quick wish good luck to all the Situate High School teams that are making the playoffs, can have me there, cause I know we've got lacrosse, baseball, and tennis, all, actually, one of them played last night and won, one of them plays Thursday, so, a lot of stuff going on, so go out and support your team, and watch a game here, or get in your car and go watch it somewhere else, so, good luck, guys, and girls.
All right.
Karen and I attended the graduation.
Oh, right.
It was very lovely service, congratulations to all the graduates, best luck to you, it was really nice, a lot of smart young students.
Outside, was it?
Mm-hmm. It was outside, they were very gutsy, they kept it outside, and the rain held off, so it was, it was perfect, it was very nice, and Principal Wargo had a very nice relationship with that class, so he was very, so it was a very, it was a good, nice town, nice town. And then just Plymouth County Advisory Board, I went, represented the chair there, and-
Better person than I.
It was fine, it was, there was really not, there's only one controversial topic, which is between Plymouth and the Plymouth County, with some land that they want to have access to, but other than that, it's pretty straightforward. Some update.
I just want to say congratulations to our videographer, Andrew.
Yay!
Make sure you're on TV, hopefully you can get yourself here, you should be. I'm not sure how much longer we have your services, Andrew, but you've done a wonderful job when you've been here. There you go, you deserve every moment.
I was turning to the TA.
But I just want to say thank you very much, and it's appreciated by us, you usually get, you know, Sean's good side, and Tony's bad side, but that's okay, we like that, and that's the view.
And you mute John through half of his die-dive, right?
And we also want to thank Megan, who's done it over the years as well.
Megan's the other one.
Both headed up to college.
There's a couple graduating, or who just graduated.
Right.
There's a bunch of juniors coming up next year, so.
Yay!
Going into the fall.
UNH.
Good.
Congratulations.
There's a wildcat, there's a wildcat.
All right, so we're going to go move back to the public hearing, discuss vote, Tensha Restaurant Group, doing business Hook and Harvest for change of manager, transfer stock, change of beneficial interest, and transfer of license, Kara Tondorf and Caitlin Tondorf, neither one are here, I'm going to recuse myself on this, and if I could, then Vice Chair, if I could hand the gavel over to you, make the vote for what you guys want to do.
Would one of my esteemed colleagues like to make the motion?
Soon as we find it.
Yeah, it's at the very top.
There it is, right there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.